Want to call this regular meeting of the City Council, City of Pearland, to order on Monday, May 24th, 2021, at 6:30 PM. We've got a good lively crowd tonight, and we are glad to see each one of you here in the chambers. I know we have some special occasions tonight as well, and can't wait to celebrate with you here in just a few minutes. First, before we start, we are going to have an invocation and a pledge. I'm going to actually lead in our invocation tonight, and Councilmember Orlando will be leading our pledges, so please stand. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for the honor to be here tonight, and we thank you for the privilege it is for this council to come and represent our city, but also have the opportunity to deliberate the issues that face our, face our community. Father, as always, thank you for bringing the rain that's much needed in our city, but also, Father, for sparing us, the additional rain is, flooding is always paramount in our community. Father, as always, we thank you for our first responders, all of them throughout our city, and what they do, and what they mean, and what they bring to our city, and we just pray that you continue to protect them, and honor them, and guide them in the, in the work that they do each and every day and night, to protect us. Father, thank you for being here, be with us, protect us as we not only deliberate, but protect us as we return homes, our homes and our places of business and our schools over the coming week. In Jesus' name.
And if you can, please join me in our pledge to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as.
And to our Texas flag.
Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, one individual.
All right. Moving forward in our agenda, we'll have a road call or certification of quorum. Looks like we have all members present, present in chambers, which is great to see. So we do have a certification of our quorum. And next up, recognition and awards. I would like for every member of our lacrosse team who's got a jersey on tonight, as well as their coaches and leadership, to join me right down here in front. See if I can do this without dropping it. Here we go. You know, once in a while, when we, I'll come through here, once in a while, yeah, I needed to be on a stool. I'm going to turn and talk to them, if that's okay with you, okay? Because you guys have done a phenomenal job, great job. How many of you are a Dawson Eagle? Raise your hand. Okay? How many of you go to Shadow Creek? Anybody? I thought we had a few. Not this year. How many from Pearland High School? Okay. This is what unity looks like. This is what Pearland looks like, okay? You're not a UIL sport, yet. We'll do what we can to push that. That way, each and every one of our schools can have the opportunity to compete on the field, rather than a collective, but you guys are blazing a trail in our community, and I for one want to celebrate that, okay? So here, I've got this, it's a proclamation. Hang on, old guy's got to get our eyes on. Or I'll just, I'll pronounce the words wrong. Proclamation of the Office of Mayor of City of Pearland, whereas established in 2009, the Pearland Lacrosse Varsity Team has proudly represented the City of Pearland and the Texas High School Lacrosse League, lacrosse teams from the, from the great state of Texas. And whereas the Pearland Lacrosse Varsity Team is comprised of players from Lynda Dawson High School, Pearland High School, Shadow Creek High School, and Turner High School. I forgot to ask, who's from Turner? Anyone? You have any on this year's team? Maybe in the, in the lower level? You have them all? You have them all? That is awesome. Whereas the Pearland Lacrosse Varsity Team has accomplished its first ever perfect season with 19 wins and no losses. It's 19-0. Right. And along the way, won the Houston South Division, won its first ever Houston City Championship, dominated the super regionals in Austin with a 13-4 win over Regent School of Austin, and the Elite Eight with a 12-9 win over Westwood, returned home and crushed, crushed the THSLL Final Four with a 14-3 win over Westlake, and earned a first ever spot in the THSLL State Championship. And whereas the recognition of all five district and two all-state player awards, the team retook the field with Pearland friends, family, and cheering fans in attendance. That's you guys. You're a part of this proclamation, folks, okay? And beat a Tascasita 10-5 on their own field to bring the THSLL State Championship home to Pearland. Pearland proud. Now, therefore, I, Kevin Cole, by the power vested in me, the, as the mayor of the City of Pearland, Texas, do hereby proclaim Monday, May 24th, 2021, as Pearland Lacrosse, excuse me, Pearland Varsity Lacrosse State Champion Day in Pearland, and I ask all citizens, both near and far, to join me as we recognize, congratulate, and celebrate the accomplishments of the 2021 Lacrosse State Champions, the Pearland Varsity Lacrosse Team, along with extending our support to the team, coaches, trainers, and supporters as the athletic program moves forward, given under my hand and seal this day, the 24th day of May, 2024, 2021, and it was an honor and a privilege to do that, young men. You have blazed a trail in our community. We're grateful for that. This is what Pearland proud. When we, when we tweet that, and we talk about it, when we, it's kind of a mantra, this is what it looks like. This is what it means. You blazed a trail in a sport that we don't know a lot about, right? You don't see this in UIL, but we're going to work and do what we can to make a UIL sport in Texas. It would be awesome to see this on an annual basis in our community, and we thank you greatly for what you have done. Chad, I'd like you to say a few words.
Well, Mayor, thank you very much, and Council, thank you very much. All you members of the public that aren't here with the lacrosse thing necessarily, thank you for allowing us to have this event. I also want to thank the other people in the city that helped make this happen, and that's Keith Ordno and Jenny Jones over at PISD, they help us with our fields, Brandon Torres at Pearland Parks and Recreation, and the other folks over there. And then also the Shadow Creek Soccer Club, who we have to work with on fields out at Hickory Slough, and so Damian Gardner's a big help. We're just all working together, making sure we all have fields. So I want to thank all those people specifically. I also want to thank all of the people that donated to our GoFundMe, so that these young men could have buses to take them back and forth to Austin, help us have dinners, rent rooms at the hotels, that we could watch film, and that they could feel away, just like they feel here, and prepare in the same manner. It was really great that the community stepped up that way. Now, in our youth level, we have kids since 2009 from all the schools in town. We normally have Shadow Creek on the team, we just, this year, we have, we actually have one, but then we also have, I don't know, several of the youth kids from over on that side of town, so it's really an east-west thing. It's all of Pearland. It's no longer really an east-west thing, and that's great. And then we have the best coaches in town. They work the hardest. They're the smartest. And I, I tell people, and I just was telling the THSLL commissioners, the issue is, is that we're normally playing chess, and other guys are playing checkers. So I'm going to turn it over to the coaches real quick and let them say a few words.
So I, I've spoken at banquet's before, but not anything like this. I was lucky enough to, to jump on board with a great program. I'm originally from North Carolina, moved here in 2013. I coached at Friendswood High School, and then I came here to Pearland. I was really honestly lucky enough to have a great assistant coach, who's going to speak in a second. Really, really lucky to have a group of kids that come from such great families, and as far as lacrosse players, incredibly talented. And I confidently could tell you that we went onto the field with usually a better team than teams we played, and that's because of the players. Players play, all we do as coaches is try to put them in the best situation for success. They have to go make the plays. These are the special ones right here, the ones in the white jerseys, I can tell you that with full confidence. And we love them, they're great kids, they're very, very blue collar tough kids, and that's part of the recipe of our success, and they come from great families, like I said before. And this was a season that I didn't, it didn't, it didn't quite hit me, what we've accomplished, until I heard the mayor speaking a few minutes ago. So trying to just take that in right now, but Coach Eric Langston is assistant coach, he was assistant coach of the year in Houston, he was All-American in college, he's going to speak now, and thank you guys so much.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out. It's been one of the honors of my life, coaching your sons, and people that aren't here, it's just been an honor to coach in this community. I love all you guys, again, just absolute honor. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council, for having us, this has been incredible.
You know, and this is just the beginning for each one of you. It's not the end. You've put blood, blood, sweat, and tears into this season to accomplish great things. I can only imagine what your lives are going to be like, and we can't wait to see how it all unfolds. Make us proud. All right, we'll wait just a couple more moments. That's always a highlight, chance to recognize youth and their advancement and their achievement. All right, moving forward in our agenda, I don't know how we get any better than that, but, yeah, I was going to say, y'all ready to adjourn? We'll just go home. So that was, that was good enough for a meeting right there, just celebrate the achievement. One of our guys could close those doors, that'll probably work with some of the... There we go. All right. Moving forward, we have citizens' comments, Mayor Pro Tim, I think we've got a couple citizens' comments for general, and then one or so under specific items.
Yes, sir, Mayor. We do have two general comments, and we have one comment for an agenda item later. First citizen comment is Mr. Roy Grasha. If you could please make your way up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
If you could, please put up the timer, and thank you for being here this evening.
Mayor, councilmembers. Hey, boy, that was a nice group of young men there.
Josh, is that microphone on?
You know what, I can't hear that well, so I'm going to just...
Making sure that mic was on, that's all, Roy.
I can hardly see you guys. Oh, okay. Hey, um, the reason I'm here, oh, my name is Roy Grasha. I've, I live at 4001 Pine Mill Court in Pearland Farms, and I've been a resident here since 2001, so right at 20 years. And I saw a conversation on the internet the other night that talked about encouraging more bars and clubs to come to the Pearland area. Well, I'm certainly totally opposed to having more bars and clubs and more people drinking and driving and, and the things that come with that. You know, when you, when you're in bars and clubs and you have, I don't know, if, if their only, only income is derived from liquor, you know there's going to be drugs and other stuff that's going to be involved in that. I'm, I'm opposed to that completely. But what I would like to talk about is a shelter here for women and children in Pearland. I know some of you know that my wife and I help kids out, and we take kids in our home that don't have a place to stay. In fact, what was really nice here, okay, was all these young men here that have a great life, right? They got a great life. And I talked to the outreach program today, the director of the outreach program up at Pearland High School, and right now, there are 271 homeless children, students in this Pearland School District. Out of that 271, about 200 are living with one parent in someone else's home. The rest of those are living in someone's home on a couch, somewhere to sleep. These boys here are pretty damn lucky, right? There's a lot of kids that aren't, and I think what the city needs to do here is possibly build a shelter for women and children, that they have a safe place to stay, somewhere where they're not going to be hurt, and have a nice place to sleep. And I actually know someone who may donate, and I don't know how to do, how you would start to do this with the city, but I do know someone who would donate, possibly donate the property that would be needed for that. I think some of you people know who I'm talking about. Anyway, what I'd like to know is, oh, and also, there's one child who is staying in a motel in the school district. Before the coronavirus, in, in 2019, there were several students who took a bus, the bus went and picked them up each and every day, go back and forth to school to a shelter somewhere in Houston, I don't know where that was. We have one student who really didn't want to go to the shelter, so they're, they're putting him up in a motel right now somewhere here in the city. I don't know if you know that.
Mr. Grasha, if you could, about 30 more seconds, please.
I'm sorry?
About 30 more seconds, please.
Oh, okay. Anyway, I'd like to talk to... Oh, okay. Anyway, I'd like to talk to any of the members here, council members, of how we could start planning and putting a shelter in to help people live in this community.
Thank you, sir. We do, we do have your information here, and so, um...
Sorry?
We do have your information that you provided here, so we will try to reach out to you.
I don't even know who's talking to me. I can't even tell. All right.
Thank you, sir. We, we do have your information here.
Can I have one more minute?
Uh, Mr., yeah, Mr. Roy, we, we give three minutes for our citizens to be heard, and, and you exhausted the three minutes. We, we can't dialogue with you on a given item because it's not on the agenda to dialogue with. We would be violating the Open Meetings Act if we did so. So...
I have no idea what you're saying.
Yeah, I, we have the information, and we can reach out to you and follow up. Thank you.
I'd like to speak to anyone that can help us do this.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you for your comments. Mayor, next, we have Mr. Adam Carroll. Would please make your way up to the podium, get your name and address for the record. I'm sure you know the drill. And since you are speaking on behalf of an organization, you do have five minutes. Thank you for being here.
Appreciate it. Adam Carroll, 12511 Britt Road, 77581. I'm here representing the Pearland Police Officers Association. Roughly 180 men and women, both civilian and sworn employees of the police department. First, just want to say relax. Not here to request anything, not here to complain about anything. I wanted to do this back in January, but due to the COVID apocalypse, we had to wait. I wanted everybody to be able to put a face to the name. So in January, I was elected as our president of our association. So I just really wanted to come before council so you could see me, meet me. I know some of you already know me. The last time I held this role was in 2014, so it's been a good while. And going forward, I just want council to know that our goal as an organization is to build a good working relationship with the city manager's office, the mayor's office, and you as council members. So, excuse me, I understand all too well the role that you serve in the public service as council members. And you get a lot of the same things that we get. You hear a lot of complaints, not a lot of compliments. And I want to express to you today that we as an organization appreciate what each and every one of you do to help run this city. We understand that not every decision you make is an easy decision, and it's not always going to make people happy. So because of that, we appreciate what you do, and a sincere thank you. That's really all I have. And if there is anything in the future that any of you would like to know or get an opinion on from the police association, absolutely feel free to reach out to me or any of the other board members. I'm pretty easy to locate. I've been with the city for 20 years, so please feel free to email, call, or text me. I would certainly welcome it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. Appreciate that. Mayor, that's all we have for general speakers. We do have another speaker signed up. Just so you'll know, Ms. McKernan, we do have you for new business item five, so we will call you at that time.
Perfect. All right. Moving on in our agenda, we have the consent agenda. I have had item I, as in Igloo, presented to me to, to pull. Are there any other items to pull from the consent agenda? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, would you call for the vote on our consent agenda? Oh, excuse me. I'm way ahead of the game. I'm like, like trying to get through this going quick. Member Orlando, would you present the consent agenda on all the, except for item I for presentation?
Absolutely, Mayor. Consideration and possible action on the consent agenda, items A through M with the exception of I. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a motion and a second. Now, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero.
All right. Moving forward in our agenda, knocked out a couple of pages, we'll actually move item I towards the end of our total agenda. Moving to new business, consideration and possible action there. Member Carbone, would you present it or presentation?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action. First reading of ordinance number 1601. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Into staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The next group of items, if I could, I'll, I'll sort of group together. That's one through four. And those are all relative to financing for the capital improvement program that's well underway. These items, with at least one or two exceptions, are consistent with the intent to reimburse that you passed at the beginning of the fiscal year, also with the CIP and the, the annual budget. So this is really about the financing. Obviously, we're here and can answer any questions you may have about the particular projects. Like I said, there was at least one that comes to mind was an ad, I believe, for Alice Street for Water Improvement. It's one of the revenue bond projects. But vast majority of these are fine tunes for the amounts, but consistent for the projects of, that you've seen several times before. So with that, we do have John Robach, our financial advisor, here with us in person this evening. And this is about the mechanisms and the way forward on the financing with all these different instruments. And Mr. Robach, I'll turn it over to him.
And is John going to be presenting kind of like one through four as a collective? That way, when we get to two, we get to three, we get to four, we'll have less staff report?
Yep. Yeah. Yes.
Thanks, John. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members. Clay, thank you so much for the introduction. I do have hard copies of the presentation. I'm not sure if we have it online also.
Is it the same as we sent out last week, I believe?
They are.
We got that in our packet, so, yeah.
Okay, you have it in your packet. Good. Well, good evening. We are here to talk about the 2021 financings. Actually, if you do want a hard copy, I do have extra hard copies, like I said. On page one of the presentation in your packet is the bond buyer index. And I always like to present this. This is the overview in this bond market. We're in a great interest rate environment. I feel like every time I come out here or talk to you guys, I say that.
John, do you have a hard copy with you?
I do have several.
Okay.
I'm yelling at the mic here. I apologize.
You're good. Thank you, John.
Everybody have a copy? On page one of the presentation, this is the bond buyer index. This is the, the weekly average municipal bond rates across the country. You'll notice on the far right, the general obligation index, which is represented by the blue line, is a 2.27%. With that in context, that's 25 basis points off of the all-time low and well below the historical average. The red line, which is the revenue index, which would represent the water and sewer bonds we're talking about selling later tonight, that's only 19 basis points off of all-time low. So we're in a great interest rate environment. We think we'll stay here for a short period of time, at least through the third quarter, unless something happens. But it's been pretty stable. I know there was a fear of inflation a couple weeks ago. We had a little uptick in rates. Those have come back down to where they were before the, the uptick. Turn to the next page. Start off with the permanent improvement bonds. This is your voted authorization in 2019 bond election. We are looking to issue approximately 15.155 million in bonds to generate proceeds of $18,015,0250 for projects associated with that 2019 bond election. Based on council's decision last, or I guess two years ago, we've structured the principle to minimize the tax rate increase. And we've actually kind of put a lot more principle in 20 years, 2030 and 2031 and two, help smooth out the tax rate with the anticipation of the TERS being dissolved and those values hitting the, the city's tax base. And so by doing that, we're, we're able, able to basically minimize the huge drop that will happen as a result of that tax rate, and also lock in some cheaper rates in the midterm of the yield curve. We are structuring this as 20-year debt, like we've done historically. We did, like I said, did structure this to minimize the tax rate increase and smooth it out for future years. On the next page is the estimated sources and uses of funds. This is a summary of the principle and how the bonds were sold in the market with issuance cost. Again, we're looking to sell 15,155,000 bonds, a premium of about $3 million. And that premium will adjust, obviously, as the market changes. That's what investors will pay the city to buy their bonds. Less the cost of issuance, about $188,000, generates total proceeds of $18,015,250. And the estimated all cost to interest rate based on today's interest rate environment is 2.495%. So 20-year debt with a, with a less than 2.5% interest rate, which is really good. On page four, the next page, we go through the certificates of obligation. We're looking at both the Series 2021A and the 2021B. 2021A are city projects, and the 2021B COs are TERS-related projects. Remember, the TERS-related projects, we're issuing the debt now or intention of being reimbursed by the TERS as money and value, incremental value increases over the TERS in the Shottuck Creek, Shottuck Creek Ranch project. The certificates of obligation, we're looking to issue about $7.1 million, some $7.2 million, which will generate 8,551,000 proceeds. And then for the TERS-related project, the Bs, 21B COs, about 16,180,000 in bonds, generate proceeds of $18,472,464. And the following page is the estimated sources and uses broken out by the 2021A and 2022B COs. On the far left, you got the 2021As, bonds about 7,180,000, premium about 1.5 million, less issuance cost, generates proceeds of 8,551,000. The all cost for this was about 2.384%. And then for the 2021B TERS projects, our amount of 16,180,000, less premium of about 2.5 million, proceeds of $18,472,464. And this estimated cost or true interest cost is about 3.193%. Then, following page, we have an opportunity, given the low interest rates, to refinance some of the existing water and sewer bonds that are outstanding, specifically the 2012 bonds. And this is a refunding for savings, it's not a restructuring. We're not extending the debt service structure. We're basically taking bonds, have an interest rate out there right now, and replacing them with bonds have a low interest rate, taking advantage of the lower interest costs in the market today. Then on the next page, page number seven, you have your, two different portions. You have the refunding portion, also new money portion, or the, or the CIP, they're on the right. For the refunding portion, we're going to refund basically $5.4 million in total debt service for the 2012 issue, and replace it with the refunding portion there in the middle columns, about 3.5 million in principal amount, generate savings of 443,000 in savings, about $23,000 a year. And also, you've basically released some of the reserve fund required on these bonds, tune about 23,000 also. So a little more than $44,000, $440,000 is closer to $460,000 in savings. And on the right, you have your new money portion, 7,715,000 in bonds, generate proceeds of 8,336,500 in proceeds. And then the following page, page eight, it's estimated sources and uses. Refunding portion, we're going to refund 4,030,000 of 2012 there at the bottom, and replace it with the new bonds of 3,510,000, less premium, less cost of issuance, or basically proceeds of 4,97,000. Estimated cost of issuance on the refunding portion is 2.383%. And we lock in, like I said, 443,000 in savings, which is a 9.7% PV savings. Then on the new money portion, 7,150,000 in principal amount being issued to generate proceeds of 8,336,500. All cost interest rate on the new money portions is 2.518%. To accomplish this, the last two pages of the presentation, it's tentative schedule events. Tonight, we're asking you to basically approve the first reading of the ordinances to issue the permanent improvement bonds, and also the water and sewer system revenue refunding bonds. We're also going to ask you to authorize a notice of intent to issue 2021A and 2021B certificates of obligation. If you all approve those, then we'll publish the first notice on June 2nd, and then come around a week later and publish a second notice on June 9th. Have a second reading on June 14th for the ordinances for the permanent improvement bonds and the water and sewer bonds, and then sell the bonds on July 6th and bring those results to you, and have you approve those, and then close on Tuesday, August 24th, at which point we'll deliver the proceeds. The city will receive the funds generated from those bond sales. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have on the financing structure, or the timing, or any other question related to the presentation.
Is that complete staff's report? All right. So moving forward, any questions that we're talking specifically on number one, permanent improvement bonds in action number one, any comments, questions, concerns from city council members? Member Owens?
Yeah. On the first page here, or on page two, we're talking about, I see the total debt service, 456 million on the debt service there. That includes all the debt that we've got presently and what you're selling at the same time, right?
On page two, this, this includes your current debt plus the permanent print bonds. If you look on page number four, it includes existing geodet plus the permanent improvement bonds plus the COs.
Yeah, on page four, it goes up to 489 million. And then on page seven, total debt goes to 510 million. And this would be selling all the bonds during that period of time, would raise it up to that value?
Right. I didn't understand. I didn't hear all of that question. I'm sorry.
No, I just say on the last one, it's 510 million.
That's water and sewer. That's a different, that's a revenue.
Right. So that's the total debt in the enterprise fund.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I've got one other question for staff. Trent Efferson, not just Trent. Looking on at the information on the bond issued 2007, bond issue, and you list out the projects there that we've got, and we show a balance of 2007 bond issue of 10.4 million. On that 2007 bond issue, those dollars were identified for a particular project through there. Do you have any idea with the 10.4 million there, the, the projects that have not been completed since 2007?
Yes, sir. That's broken down in your package between road and drainage improvements. The road is 7.7 million, the bulk of that, and that is the Macau Road Project. So that obvi, we know received matching, or received, yeah, matching funds from HGAC through the tip. And so we've had to go through the lengthier preparation of that project process with tax dot. And so, you know, those dollars will be spent when that project lets. And then the 2.8 was the, the DL Smith prop, project, which we've used some of those funds for buyouts and some of those funds for some other drainage projects. And I believe we've slated these remaining funds over the next couple of years to be, to, to go towards drainage improvements.
Yeah. And I, I would just say that out of the 2000 bond issue that people that voted on those, residents who voted on those were identified as particular projects through there. And getting those projects that were identified completed with the dollar amount left in the, in the budget for the 2007.
Just, just to be clear, the, the authorization by the voters was for those buckets that you see on page seven of 66 and eight? So that's what, there were illustrative projects that were specified for what kinds of things are envisioned. And we've actually, as we've shared, and you know, done many more projects and gotten more done because of leveraging outside dollars. I mean, the road projects are described back then, only scratched the surface of what's actually been accomplished with that 84 million authorization.
Yeah. But the, what I'm saying is the projects that were identified and the, and the dollars were tied to them, those particular projects have been completed, and the excess funds, we're using them on other projects.
The only one that hasn't been completed is the Macau Road Project. The only one that hasn't been completed is the Macau Road project, and that one's, you know, slated to be bid out here in the next year or so. And if you'll recall, we only fifty percent funded that through the two thousand and seven bond program, so it required us to get those outside funds to do that project.
All right, appreciate it, thank you.
I have one question, John. On page three, the estimated all cost to interest rate was two point four nine seven, but you said point four nine five, I just wanted to clarify that.
All right, yes, two point four nine seven, sorry.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Lot of numbers.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? We do have two, three, and four that we may have some questions on. You want to go ahead and ask your question? Go ahead and ask your question.
John, you didn't produce the staff memo, it's in the write-up, but they essentially put some buckets, and the buckets were projects whose cost have remained the same relative to intent to reimburse, some have gone down, some have gone up, there's only one that's gone up, you know. Or the amount that you're asking for approval in this, are these net of all those adjustments, or are these the original bonds before the cost adjustments?
This is, my understanding is this is net of all those adjustments, this is the final approved amount.
Somebody on the staff, is that, is that correct alignment?
Any questions, comments, concerns from council? New business item number one, Madam Secretary will call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
No.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
The motion carries six to one.
All right, moving to new business item number two, Mayor Pro Tim, would you present that one, please?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Consideration and possible action resolution number R two zero two one dash one one five, so moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Assuming we've already had staff report, do you want to, what portion of presentation was this presented?
Uh, the TERS. The TERS, Mayor.
Okay.
Page just four and five.
All right. Any questions, comments, concerns from council? Ben Rowland?
Just a little bit of clarification, on the Shadow Creek Library, that is going to be, let's see, on this, sixteen point five million on certificates of obligation on COs, I thought that was GOs.
No, the, all the, all those projects were TERS reimbursable projects, so those are, city's going to be made whole back from the TERS with interest more than we're paying out.
And TERS, that's what, in thirty-five?
One more time?
The date on that.
It's short, it's seven years, eight years?
It's, it's, it's actually.
It's, it's going to, it's timed with the expiration of the TERS in twenty thirty, so call it nine years?
Nine years. So when the TERS expires in twenty twenty-nine, this will, this will be completely, hopefully reimbursed, paid off, and this will actually be positive, that positive for the city.
And the interest that we paid on the COs, when now and that time, it'd be collected back on the TERS, do that right?
Yeah, that was never a general obligation project.
This is for the staff, so we had the tour, just for the benefit of the general public, probably two, three weeks ago, out to the library, very positive, but there were some last minute items that we maybe, as we're getting towards the completion, being able to do. How does this financing align with those items that may or may not come on the list?
Can I speak to that?
I believe all the items we discussed and that are in the works are included in this financing.
Let me ask a question. So, under the original scope, we had twenty-two point nine million dollars, let's say twenty-one million of it is going towards the library in some way, shape, or form, sorry, twenty point five million, now that number's down to sixteen five? Can we get some more color on what that transition is, at least for the public's edification?
So you're talking about the difference between the intent to reimburse for the library being twenty point five versus the sixteen point five?
Right.
So that's just the result of going through the CMAR process of actually completing the design on the project, along with the, the construction manager at risk helping us through that design process, making sure we have an efficient, cost-effective building, and where we ended up on our final guaranteed maximum price for that project. You know, when the original estimates were put together for the two thousand nineteen bond program, we assumed a certain amount of inflation and a certain amount of contingency to do that project based on our cost estimates at that time, so we've been able to bring it in well under the cost estimates initial, the initial cost estimates.
FPC manager, I just want to reconfirm, I'm not that bright, you guys, in theory, saved money on this project, in theory?
I mean, I think we can attribute a lot of that to our great staff and the construction manager at risk and our good design team that was on the project. I mean, some of this was also, you know, built in to make sure that inflation didn't get away from us on the overall budget, but I think our staff did an excellent job keeping costs.
I'm trying to give you kudos, so I just hope that makes it into the community impact that we saved money in the order of two to three million dollars, so kudos to the team.
Good point. Any other questions, comments? Standing now, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero.
All right, moving forward to item number three, Mr. Kamkar, would you present that one, please?
Sure. For consideration, possible action resolution number R two zero two one dash one one four, so moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, concerns from council? Member Carbone?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the chart staff put together in terms of public safety, internal or external funding. Can you give me some rationale on the Hill House Road Annex, phase two, marked as internal funding source leverage?
Yes, sir. So that is the next phase of our Public Works, you know, expanding and renewing their facilities, and so the internal matching funds there are from the Water and Sewer Fund for the personnel that work in that, out of that fund that'll be housed in that facility.
Yeah, thank you for that explanation. In my mind, that's a little stretch, you know, like the Clear Creek Trail, I think that's through what, state or federal matching funds, that makes sense to me. My consistent opinion on COs is it needs to be in the CIP and put out to the voters, so that'll be my no vote for this one.
Any other questions, comments? Standing now, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Kamkar?
No.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
No.
The motion carries five to two.
All right, moving forward to item number four, Member Little, would you present that one?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, first reading of ordinance number sixteen hundred, so moved.
Second, motion and a second. Moving to council questions, comments, concerns, anyone have anything to present? Standing or hearing done, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you all. Rick Witty's here also, so he's your bond counsel, I meant to introduce him at the very beginning. He's the one who drafted all the legal documents.
Thank you, Rick, thank you, John. Always a good job. Moving forward to item number five, this is our quarterly utility billing update, and as we, as Nancy moves to the podium, a couple things, staff's going to give their presentation, and as also in this, part of this presentation, our ad hoc committee has an update and information as well, and I think our chairman, Steve Sabo, is here, and I think he's going to speak, and we also have a subcommittee around meters and some of the infrastructure that may present as well, so that's all under our committee and staff report. With that one, I'm just going to present this, a staff presentation of quarterly process and procedural work, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms., oh, one, one, one quick question, real, real quick. We do have a citizens that would, that would like to speak, and Nancy, before you start your presentation, we're going to have this citizen speak. Mayor Pro Tim, go ahead and present.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Marion McKernan, if you would like to make your way to the podium?
Thank you for reining me in.
Yes. Please state your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you for being here this evening, and thank you for your patience.
Thank you. My name is Marion McKernan, I live at twenty-three twenty-one South Lego Vista Drive, I've been a resident for the last fifteen years. I have a, I guess I'm confused on getting these water bills I've been getting, they're like two months behind, and then they're also, I understand that the water bill, we haven't, we owe money on the water bill, but I don't understand why we're being billed for the sewer garbage mud district, we've already paid twelve months of it, so why are we also paying, continuing to pay on that, even though we're paying two months behind? And it's just, if you could explain this bill to us, I guess we're not as bright as we, as you are, but it would help for the explanation. And I also have a comment, and this is just an observation, as I look around on all the people that are sitting here, there's eighteen, nineteen people, I only see three females. Is this typical of Pearland? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKernan.
And I'll address that, Ms. Massey, when we're done with the presentation of item number five, would you get with Ms. McKernan, and maybe you can help explain, walk her through that water bill, that way she can understand how that's been, how that's been presented. I know sometimes looking at the bill can get confusing, and if we don't understand why the billing is what it is, but with that, Ms. Massey, I guess I'll turn it over for staff report and presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, thank you, Mayor Cole. Good evening, I'm Nancy Massey, I'm your utility billing manager, I'm here to speak on the third quarter utility billing quarterly update for fiscal twenty twenty-one. I'm just going to wait for Josh to bring that up.
On the second, thank you. Tonight, we're going to talk about the introduction, progress report, current events, excuse me, current projects, special projects, and follow-up items from past discussions. Just a little background on this, the billing latency was discovered in the second quarter of fiscal twenty twenty via the annual audit in January. The following, following the council and staff discussions, the thirty-two thirty plan was adopted and began in August of twenty twenty, and the first of three quarterly reviews was held at the same time, along with Raff tillis awarding utility billing process and review. In December of twenty twenty, Raff tillis presented their final report, and in January, council appointed eight members of the ad hoc committee, and in February of twenty twenty, ad hoc presented their first initial recommendations. In March of twenty twenty, council adopted their updates of section thirty ordinances. In April, the mayor had his first talk of the town, which was held at Rogers Middle Looking ahead, as of tonight, we're going to speak with the ad hoc advisory committee, the subcommittee, as well as the additional recommendations that they may have, as well as their, the term is due to expire on July tenth after six months, and the next quarterly update is going to be August twenty-third. And tonight's discussion is a big part of the continuous process the team is making to review improved practices and build exceptional utility billing team. As always, our mandate is despite our turnover and before we got here, it was the leadership positions where a big turnover, utility billing division must continuously and proactively seek out ways to improve the processes, both internally and externally, to improve exceptional services. The status quo, which is based on our past practices, is not acceptable. Adding to our mandate is the ad hoc advisory committee's information mandate, that is, every customer-client interaction in utility billing is an opportunity for problem-solving, systemic improvement, as well as for rebuilding relationships with users. Part of our progress report, wanted to point out that our thirty-two thirty remains on track, even with the freeze that we had. The bill dates, read dates have been completed on time, the purpose is to gradually close the arrears gap that was from seventy-eight days, and currently is at fifty-five days, providing exceptional customer service. In April of, in this past April, over twelve hundred phone calls have been made to our office, one hundred and fifty-five emails. Of these, ninety-nine point five percent were successfully resolved, and to continue to, to continue to utilize escalated inquiry tracking with the CMO, as well as continue to utilize centralized internal spreadsheet to organize and follow up with customers' request. We will continue a proactive approach in March, increasing the contacting from twenty-five high usage customers to fifty prior to billing, contacting customers with three- and four-inch water meters, there being exchange from the old Neptune water meters to Badger water meters, we're concerned that they may see an increase in their water usage due to the accuracy of the new Badger water meters, and adding the customer email counts to outward-facing dashboard to continue monitoring the billing and progress of usage. And we will continue to assist the ad hoc committee, as well as the subcommittee. I'd like to talk about an event that occurred, in the progress report, in cycle eleven, February readings, it was in the March first weekly update as well, meter services failed to reset the drive-by unit from the meter profile to current readings. Due to a significant amount of collected data, the system was overwhelmed. After, after they discovered the issue, they reset the unit and reread cycle eleven from the beginning. Of the twelve thousand meters to read on February twelfth, two thousand nine hundred forty-nine meters were read that day, then on the thirty-second day, and the balance, which was over nine thousand meters, was read on the thirty-third day, which was February To maintain the thirty-two thirty plan, billing staff contacted Itron for a solution to ascertain the February twelfth reading. Itron was able to provide a process to reread cycle eleven on February, on February twenty-third, which was after the storm. Of the twelve thousand meters in the billing cycle, three thousand nine hundred seventy-seven meters were unable to be picked up on February twelfth, that midnight reading, and provided the February twenty-third reading, which was the drive-by reading. Billing staff collaborated with the finance analyst to calculate the daily average from the previous read date, January eleventh, to February twenty-third for impacted customers, and then multiplied by thirty-two to provide the customers with that thirty-two day April bill. Billing staff collaborated with IT to input the manual calculations and update their current read date to February twelfth. Manual calculations are part of billing process. When a meter reading or appropriate read date is not available, best practices is to ascertain the next available date to the read the meter, calculate the daily average from the previous read date to the recent read date, and multiply by the number of billed Billing staff has already begun assessing the three thousand nine hundred seventy-seven meters to the thirty-third day, February thirteenth readings. We're utilizing the New World Test Environment, staff is inputting the previous January eleventh data, where you're inputting the February thirteenth manual calculated meter reading file to the February twelfth, we're generating a report that will illustrate the appropriate April bills for the impacted customers. Staff will compare the April test bills to the customers' April bills to ascertain the difference for an adjustment. The applicable adjustment will be applied to their next bill, which is June, and staff will regenerate a robocall's to the impacted customers. Lessons learned? Yes. We escalated this to the CMO, but it needs to be more. We escalated this to the CMO, but it needs to be more in-depth and followed up. Proactively communicate with the impacted customers. We're also developing a decision tree, which will be an escalation process to post on the website. And we're adding a reading type to the bills for clarity beginning July of 2020. Current event, current project, excuse me. Winter storm event successfully accounts were billed for the lesser amount of the actual usage or the usage share at the same time as last year. Over 6,700 manual entries inputted and validated by staff prior to billing. Manual entries included the new accounts from March of 2020 to current and compound registers. These are registers with two registers, high and low. In addition, staff is working with three and four inch meter exchanges. In March of 2021, city expanded the AMI project to include exchanging the three and, and four inch Neptune water meters to Badger meters. Previously, these meters were retrofitted with the Itron AMI system registers to read the meters. Public Works performs the meter changeouts. Each meter is independently tested for accuracy and stored for six months. Utility billing staff is contacting each customer prior to the first bill and of the new Badger meter to advise them of a possible increase in their billing due to the improved accuracy of the new Badger meters from the Neptune meters. And once the test results are received, staff is emailing those over to the customers. The next screen shows you that chart that of those three and four inch meters changeout, 52 of the old Neptune meters were tested. 29 of them were showing that they failed the AWWA accuracy standards. Those are 56% of those meters. The fail meters are due to age, mechanical issues. And test results range between 35.80% to 97.80%. Fail test indicates a meter is measuring below the actual water usage, not reflecting their actual usage. An example would be a meter test at 35.80% would only register 35.8 gallons of use for every 100 gallons that flowed through it. Special projects, talk of the town, the successful event presented, the water is more than a bill. With COVID safety protocols, UB staff participated, having one-on-one communications with customers. That was held on April 20th at Rogers Middle School. It was the first of the quarterly town hall style events. Staff looks forward to other ones in the future. Current and new garbage vendor, effective April 1st, waste management increased the residential cost by 36 cents from 1837 to 1873 per month due to a fuel increase. And the next fuel cost quarterly review will be on June 30th. October 1st, Frontier Waste Solutions will be assuming the role of garbage services. In April, Frontier mailed postcards to the Pearland customers to introduce the company, advise of a cart delivery in the September, and provide a QR code to download and set up their mobile app. The mobile app will be provided updates prior to the effective date of October 1st. And I'd like to also say that the next talk of the town is going to be held on June 29th at University of Houston Pearland. Follow-ups, items from past discussions. We'll continue to work with both the ad hoc committees. And the ad hoc committee is subdivided in, in May into a subcommittee of four members to review the metering infrastructure and the meter reading process. Future future recommendations will be coming from ad hoc. And February 18th, ad hoc's initial recommendations were provided to council on, on February 18th. And the staff has already agreed and, and already begun the implementation of those. Agreed and implemented recommendations include continuing the quarterly and weekly updates to CMO, council, and ad hoc. Weekly UB leadership meetings, bi-monthly UB team meetings, outward-facing dashboard of KPIs, now tracking the customer email counts, continuing and updating SOPs, location in centralized depository at the knowledge center for the team. And continue cross-training sessions with UB staff and meter services, involvement in the AMI project since its inception, proactive outreach of the three, four, three-inch and four-inch meter exchanges, and adding the read type to the bills indicating drive-by manual or estimation in July. Follow-up as well to the high consumption usage monitoring directed by council in March. Staff increased the contacts from 25 to 50 of the highest consumption counts per billing cycle based on previous billed usage and last year's usage at same period. Staff generates emails requested by meter prof, on requested meter profiles, as well as customers who cannot be contacted via phone or email. Staff continues to go ahead and make a meter profile for these customers. This proactive approach will continue until the transition of the customer portal this summer. And since its inception in August of 2020, staff has contacted 823 impacted customers to deliver exceptional customer service and rebuild trust. Another follow-up in past discussions was the KPI dashboard. Since November 2020, UB launched the external dashboard illustrating the key metrics. The interactive tool for users to view is the average daily usage by cycle, delinquency information, call volume, escalated inquiry count to CMO, and new, we added, was the customer email counts, which is another tracking, tracking device. Shortly, we like to be adding a link to view the city's annual utility billing response to the American Waterworks Benchmarking Survey. And then the next screen, it shows you what that dashboard looks like for emails. On the top, it'll show you that the one in red is from May. The 96 email accounts that we, that contacted us was about move-outs. And below that is specifically meant for leak and high consumption, and the last entry in that is in April. Because at this time in May, we did not have any that have contacted us via email. Follow-up items also include the termination notice. The city councils approved in March 22nd of the second section 30 ordinances. With previous delinquent notices, we're updated to the new termination notice. Collaborating with legal, referencing the Texas administrative code, a new ordinance, new notice is updated with a termination notice on the top of the letter, as well as new verbiage informing of a formal notice of the city's intent to interrupt service in accordance to the section 30-24, and also states in there, see reverse side. Suggested by council, thank you, the backside of that notice does have the section 30-24 ordinance. Only change in the process is when the city closes the account. There's no change to the active customer timeline. The staff has been experiencing uptick in phone calls due to customers' perception that the compressed timeline is due only to the change in the form and that's, and also the verbiage. The staff will continue to monitor the impact of this change. And the next screen, you'll see where that new, what that new notice looks like. As well as shut-offs are only meant for customers that are two months in arrears. Those customers have already received two regular bills, two late fee robocalls, two term, two termination notices, two shut-off call robocalls, and then being shut off. The only difference in this process now is that we no longer have to send out a second letter. And because the termination policies on the back, or termination ordinances are on the back of the notices. So it saves both time and money. I'd like to end with our utility goals. They'll always be to continue to rebuild the trust with our customers through transparency tools, to view their usage and meter profiles, external dashboards, and again, the ad hocs mandate of every customer-client interaction in utility billing is an opportunity for problem-solving and systemic involvement, as well as rebuilding relationships with users. And thank you so much. I'll be happy to take any questions from council.
Yeah, before we move on, I, you know, there's a lot there. So I'd turn it over to council for any questions, comments, concerns. Number Owens.
Just a point of clarification on, I get out and pretty well off the neighborhood every morning. And what I see is the meters that are set about a foot off from the sidewalk, but it's, they're joined together in between the two houses. And those joined together is our actual drainage areas for, from the back to the front of the houses. And normally I'll go through there and, and the, you know, the meters are underwater. They may have two to three inches of water on top of them. Either that or the top's off. Normally I'll put the top back on, on the meter itself. But are those things, the meters function in that kind of an area? If they're underwater or the top's back on them or whatever.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, they do. And they can function, they can drive by and still pick up those readings, as well as I understand with AMI, we'll be able to still pick those up.
And just to follow up on, on that New World, on the last time we, I'm going to prove them into that. They were supposed to come in and add some training in that. Have they been able to do that?
Yes, sir, they have been. And we, we reach out to them whenever we have a question and to go ahead and try to, to give us some information on things, especially when it comes to doing the, what we're trying to do right now. That was the step of the, of the freeze that we did miss. And we'll acknowledge that one, and it's always the continuous improvement that we're doing. So we're using what New World has for us, which is the test environment. So we don't disturb anything in the live environment for billing. We can try everything out in the test environment and go that direction.
Because one of the statements come out before we approve that, that the staff didn't know how to, to work with the software from New World. And that was real concerning to hear that when we was paying them three to $400,000 a year, you know, for the software. But that's why I just want to make sure that we were getting those training periods of time through there, that they're, they're paid for.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else?
Yeah, just one quick question. So once the 3230 plan was adopted, we had, I think roughly a two-year schedule before believed that we would be completely caught up with the arrears. Where are we on that schedule right now?
We're, we're at the average right now, sir, of 55 days. And we started off at 78 days. We're looking to end that 3230 plan, which is working very successfully. We're looking to end that 3230 plan at the end of 2022 and the beginning of 2023 for cycle 14.
So we'd say we're about a quarter of the way through?
I would look at more of a third of the way through possibly, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do you have questions? So, Ms. Massey, just for clarification, there's a lot of data here. Is the 3230 plan working the way it's supposed to work?
Yes, sir, it is.
This was something that was previously approved at a previous council meeting, guessing a year ago?
Yes, sir. That was done in, it was talked about in January and it was approved in February, and the process started in August of 2020.
So in your professional opinion, the council is getting what it was at, what, what was offered to it, it is working?
Yes, sir, it is working. Let's take it one step further. Once AMI is up and functioning like it's been indicated, we can be able to take people who want to true up on their accounts. If they want to true up on their accounts, we would be able to put them into a separate billing cycle. And we'll be able to pull those readings, put them in a separate billing cycle, and bill those on a set bill date. And we look to bill those customers. You want to incorporate all 365 days. As a professional person that's done billing for over 25 years, you want to bill somebody at incorporates the whole 365 days. So you want to bill those customers five months at 31 days, based on a current read date, and seven months at 30 days. When you add those together, it incorporates all 365 days. So therefore, that's what you want to do. So once AMI is up and functioning, the goal would be to put out a public campaign to tell customers you could sign up for, for these, for the true up. When you sign up for true up, the goal would be is that they would get their first bill with the true up amount, and they're going to have their current bill on it, and then we'll put them into a special billing cycle so we can send out their bills every month on the same bill date.
Let me ask you a question. You, you make a great point. How many people, I know that there's some that were very interested in being able to just pay what they owed today or at the time that they would talk to you. How many people, year-to-date, since this item has been out there, do we have that have taken that opportunity?
Nobody's taken the opportunity on it only because we can't offer it. Because once you sign someone up for it and they want to know how much it is, that amount will be fluid and will always change.
So the, the number of five or six?
Five, it's five, that was according to my last weekly update. It's also because it has also been not been publicized, because it can't be something we push forward yet with on it.
So, so those five people of the 130,000 citizens or users or whatever you want to call it, those five people have called you, and you have made a special accommodation for those people?
No, sir. No, sir. We just advised them that it's not available at this time, and that when it is available, they'll be able to sign up for that process.
So when is that going to be available?
If the AMI project, I'd refer over to Mr. Upton at that point.
Hot potato. Can we just rephrase a question here, just a second? Oh, the AMI, which somebody can come and pay, day one of AMI, whatever is back owed, when will that be available? Or the opportunity of the citizens to use that option?
The same question.
Councilman Cam Carr, this is Robert Upton, Director of Engineering.
Yes, sir.
And Public Works. To answer your question, that is going to come online associated with the AMI project. And currently, right now, we have completed, and I'm going to give you a little background real quick. We've completed all the installation of meters, meter lids, meter boxes, et cetera. We are in the process of installing the remaining 26 connected grid routers or antennas that need to be installed. We've installed 27 of them, but it's not citywide per the propagation study. And we are in the process of getting those remaining 26 scheduled and installed. So those other 26 need to be online before we can offer it citywide.
Down to the quarter, do we think that's fourth quarter of this year or sometime next year, or just roughly speaking?
It's estimated right now to be about third quarter of the calendar year.
I'm, I'm happy that whatever this previous council approved to do is working. I would tell you, I have reticence to change what's working. I guess if it ain't broke, don't fix it. If council asks us to do that, I would also with one thing. If we did, decided to etch a sketch the scenario and change what we're doing, would it make sense for us to take time to study that recommendation? I think if I recall the discussion, we made a change way too quickly. That was probably not ill-conceived, not thought out, and that's how we got in this mess. Would it seem reasonable to you, Ms. Massey, to take the time that whatever the recommendations are, if there is a change, to take time to review those so we don't make the same blunder again?
We should always take our time to read through and, and research what needs to, any kind of options that you, that council wants to look at.
Fair enough. I'm just curious, Mayor, because we always try to think about, you know, if the public is actually gaining something from these meetings. And so, Ms. McKernan, if you just want to shake your head, are you, is this digestible to you? Are you understanding what, what has occurred and kind of where you are? Because I know you had a broader, general question of, you know, why are we paying these back bills? Did that come out in tonight's discussion? No? Okay. So we, we will make sure that staff reaches out to you independently afterwards. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, you were gaining something. So maybe if we can kind of, in our responses. Okay. I don't know if you want to do a, a real quick, just trying to recap in more plain language?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to. The decision was made sometime back that they were going to 28-day bill cycles. And when you go to 28-day bill cycles, Ms. McCurry, what happens is that you have some time left over at the end of the year. Yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am. And what, in what way was the question on the billing that why we're, where it's two months, showing two months on there? The mud is based off of a current timeframe. The garbage is on a current timeframe, but your water cost and your sewer cost is based off of a billing period that you have not been billed for yet. And that's what the billing period is right there for you. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And you're, you're being billed for your March, you're being billed for that timeframe that's listed on your bill for your water and sewer costs.
I don't want to, I don't want to get too deep into the weeds here, but just, just so you maybe, so they're separately billed. One is recurring every single month, just it's basically the same assessment versus one is based off of readings. Is that kind of what you're trying to say in a digestible form?
In a digestible form.
Okay. And, and I, yeah, I had mentioned, let, let's talk offline directly.
Yeah.
We can sit with our bill and walk directly through that. There may still be some questions, Ms. Massey, before we, before we move on. Any other questions, comments?
Thank you for that high-level recap.
I'd be interested to hear the ad hoc committee's report.
Yeah, we're going to get to that in just a second. I would like to ask a couple of questions around the, the meter read problem. the the meter read problem. And I understand problems happen. Couple of things. One, and I understand estimations may happen. Is it is it normal, again, with A W W A that we do 10% of our customers on an estimated bill? I mean, that 37 3977 accounts is basically 10% of our total accounts. It's probably a quarter of cycle of 12 got an estimated bill. I don't have the math in front of me, but estimated. So is that? I mean, I I get it. If if one or two or an off account, there's a problem, we do an estimated read and we 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 continue to move. In this particular case, 3,900 plus customers got an estimated read, you know, and 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 in that, and I get it, lessons learned and we're we're three or four months removed from that and we're going back and going to make some adjustments. But part of that second meter read that we then took 43 days and compressed and said, okay, what's their average assumption? We're going to apply that to 32 days. We don't know how many of those accounts might have had 1,000 gallons that were pouring in from their roof as a result of a freeze. We don't know any of that. And that is part of that that data that got into 43 days. And so and then I find it hard to understand why we called Itron and didn't call upper management.
I agree with you.
I'm having a hard time with that one.
And I too. I agree with you on that statement as well. It's a continuous improvement that we've made into the office as well and looked at it and said, we've advised CMO but was not in depth and it wasn't in a follow-up procedure as well. So that was something that that is something we're looking for. We're looking toward doing better with the citizens as well.
And I know we didn't have. We had this update in February, probably a week before that. So it it happened after this update. So this was the first time in a council setting, we've had the opportunity to talk about it. Yes, it was in a a U B update. It was about four lines of a of a of a memo. Not sure that it it caught many people's attention when it happened. At the same time, I guess a lesson learned, we've got a citizens ad hoc group in the midst of doing work. Probably lessons learned, again, would have been good to have brought that forward to the citizens group that was there in real time because they were meeting about twice a week during that time. I know we took the time off for the in in the actual freeze, but in the in the weeks after that, they were meeting at least twice a week. Would have been would have been interesting to have seen and heard what they would have captured and maybe even have suggested in the midst of that. Meanwhile, we've got almost 4,000 accounts that don't know that they had an average read. And so we didn't follow up at the time and and let people know they were on an average read. So again, this has been, I mean, this this whole issue around communications and those types of things has been an issue for the last year plus. And I I would have hoped we would have learned that well before now that we would have communicated to these customers that they had an average read. So it's a little disheartening for me. Again, as much time and focus and energy that we placed on that, that we would have, we would have done that. So that's all I've got on that. If anybody wants to move on, I'd like to have our our Chairman Sabo come up and do, Ms. Massey, thank you for the
I just had a quick question of clarification on that, if I could. Just on the the 43-day compression and that kind of having the stuff from the winter freeze averaged into that. I just wanted to know if that was addressed by the action the council took to minimize the effects of the winter freeze on residents' water bills?
Was it's being looked at right now. Councilman Orlando, we're we're taking those counts themselves and we're doing a comparison between what they were billed and what they should have been billed at so we can apply that adjustment.
And get the lower of this?
Yeah.
And get the lower and then and then updating that amount too as well.
Okay. Just want to make sure I was clear on that point.
Yes, sir.
It wasn't done in real time. That's part of the lessons learned. Yeah, good, good pickup on that. I I again, it's more manual work, you know, for that. So Chairman Sabo.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, thank you.
Mayor, while he's coming up, just thinking through the timeline, we haven't had a council update, but you had a talk of the town back in April.
Right. Wasn't disclosed.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight and have a couple of our committee members here as well in the audience. As chairman of the Utility Building Ad Hoc Committee Citizens Committee, I appreciate the opportunity to obviously support the effort, but to represent the ad hoc committee's opinions and recommendation. On last Thursday, the committee voted unanimously to recommend that the Pearland City Council end the 3230 plan and replace it with a simpler and more appropriate alternative for the citizens of Pearland. As you know, in our charter, council commissioned the committee to prospectively evaluate the utility billing system and identify system improvements to enhance utility billing services and to build public trust. As part of this, you asked us to complete a review and analysis of the Raffetellus recommendation published in December, complete a review and analysis of the staff response to the Raffetellus report, and to provide formal recommendations to the city council regarding each recommendation contained in the Raffetellus report. Now, one of the more controversial topics in this review has been the 3230 plan, no doubt, but in place basically to compensate for a major billing and financial mistake made by management and staff. After months of work, information review, conversations, research, and dialogue with U B staff, the committee developed our recommendation. And having been asked by staff to share a draft so that in good faith they would review in advance, we received an 85-page response from staff. In paraphrasing the response, we've been told that we're wrong on many fronts. Interestingly, it reminded me of the staff response to Raffetellus document that started this whole process. It was full of much more critique than it was solutions for the good of the citizens of Pearland. Nonetheless, we voted to move forward with our recommendation. We disagree with staff's apparent position on 3230, and we disagree on the core financial foundation and the assumptions on which the plan was built. I stand here to represent our unanimous position that 3230 should go away and we should replace it with something that's effective, equitable, and final, as opposed to dragging the current plan out into early 2022. We based our recommendation on the following four principles. Nobody should be billed for something they don't owe. There's a certain amount of money that account holders do owe, and it's due to the city of Pearland. The fear of financial consequences, whether they be bonds, budget cuts, rate increases, et cetera, should not keep the committee from recommending what is right. And the fourth is rebuilding public trust is paramount, as per our charter. The solution we propose is relatively simple. We disagree with the city's arrears calculation and we agree with the Raffetellus approach. Simply put, most people don't owe additional base charges because of this billing mistake. 3230 assumes that everyone does. Charge people only what they owe. Since it's no longer factually possible for a citizen to correlate their consumption with their bill, no user is in a position to confirm that they're being billed correctly. This is unfair by any standard. And since millions of dollars are being spent by the city to install AMI so that citizens can correlate consumption with their billing, why prolong 3230 for a year and a half when the primary fix to the public trust trust issue is right around the corner? End 3230 now. Send a bill to get the accounts current, be fair and reasonable to citizens in the collections process, and implement AMI so this doesn't happen again. In the memo we are presenting to council to support and provide context for our recommendation, we offer several strong points for you to consider. We ask that you read each one carefully. We're concerned because we have received very little feedback from council on our previous recommendations. Some committee members even believe you may not have read them. I'll simply ask you to remember that you asked us to serve. And we're giving our time and talent to represent all of your constituents, not just the noisy ones, not just the ones on Facebook, not just the ones that check their bills on a monthly basis. Reading our documents, please do us the honor of at least playing devil's advocate. Ask yourself these questions. Why do we think that the arrears calculation is key to this issue and to the whole problem? Why do we believe, and we as the committee, of course, why do we believe that the assumption that everyone should be charged an extra monthly base charge is wrong? From the time we asked to see the arrears calculation in late January, first question we asked, by the way, why did it take nearly six weeks to get a straight answer? Why would the utility billing staff create and circulate a memo in early April that suggests a one-bill catch-up methodology as the right way to go, only suddenly to change their mind after we presented our draft? Why would staff invite a draft of our work so they could, in their own words and check the tape, punch holes in it, and then write 85 pages in response to our two-page memo? Did it seem like we were picking a fight? Why would staff argue that the fix we're suggesting is a burden on resources after they've already acknowledged that 3230 is a burden on resources? Why would you, as city council, delay the benefits of AMI implementation in the spirit of simply allowing citizens to verify each month that their bill is accurate? Especially when you're already aware that it's impacting public trust, or we wouldn't be here. Why would council pay for a sharp and experienced consultant like Raffetellus and hear their recommendations only to experience such pushback from staff? I invite you to go back and reread Raffetellus recommendation number six. And I invite you to go read staff's response. We did. We think Raffetellus was on to something. We're simply not sure why we've experienced similar pushback from staff when it comes to this topic. Is this the culture issue that Raffetellus referred to in their recommendation number one? If you hadn't read staff's 85 85-page response to our two-page memo on 3230, we invite you to do that too. And then ask yourself what motivated that. We recognize that you don't have to accept or act on our recommendation. But if you believe in the charter you voted for and you do commit to listen to our words and consider them, if you have questions, we also have pages and pages of supporting documents and reference material. We're happy to share them. Finally, it's important that I mention that our work is not complete. Out of respect for the ongoing work of committee members, we have other recommendations that we believe will be impactful and may even be eye-opening to you on the meter-to-cash process, among some other elements of the U B process. Again, I thank you for your opportunity to comment and to serve on the committee. Thank you.
Mr. Sabo. Thanks for your time. I I really enjoyed your comments. I thought they were really good. It's very something I would I would read that on Facebook. I mean, it was it was probably all questions, all valid questions, all important questions. The question I have is, do you agree with almost any of the materials the city has provided to you?
Well, first of all, as you recall, the Raffetellus document was very lengthy, right?
No, 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 sir. I'm just I'm asking again for for the folks who are writing community impact. I just want to get a simple answer. Do you agree in the accuracy of any of the materials the city staff has provided to you?
Of course.
Okay.
Of course.
So let me ask you a second question.
Sure.
Do you believe there's a conspiracy to steal from the citizens of this city actively?
The word conspiracy has not come up in our discussions. I don't know that it's active. I don't personally believe.
Yes or no question?
I don't personally believe that there is conspiracy, but we clearly have a disagreement with the essential components of collecting money and what monies are being collected.
So you you've referenced that we are not building trust. You've said the word trust no less than seven times. You're telling me that you believe the accuracy of all the data and then for the better
I didn't say that. You asked me if I
Okay.
believed any of the data.
For the better part of a 10-minute screed, you more or less cast aspersions on everybody in this city that works for the city and for the members of this council.
I'm sorry. I don't disagree. I don't agree with your comments.
And that's fine. But it's just it's hard for me to take this seriously when the the folks that we entrust to do this job have told us that the 3230 plan is working. You we I have a hard time believing that everything that they're providing you has question marks on it. And it's just really hard for me to take this seriously because we're literally peeling out every little detail and you keep questioning every single detail. And I just I almost want the final report. I just want to read the recommendations. I I don't. It's almost a waste of time for us to say, well, for this two hours, we're going to discuss this. But we've got six more things that we need to discuss. How can we take this as a body and analyze this if literally every two weeks, there's something new that we have a major issue with?
If you allow me to respond, we have a six-month charter. And at no point on that journey did anyone instruct us that we had to deliver all of our recommendations at once. We knew, in fact, that there was a substantial body of work and lots of material to deal with. We were asked, in fact, to accelerate our recommendation on 3230. And after copious questions to gain information, we felt like we were stonewalled.
So let me ask you a question if that's the case. Do you guys have all the meeting minutes from all of your meetings? You guys were subject to the Toma, I believe?
No, they weren't. They they were only subject to certain meeting notes and meetings had to be posted 24 hours in advance.
Mr. Coker, what are they subject to Toma?
No, as an advisory board, they are not not subject to Toma. What happened was the charter that was created, the council required that their meetings be posted 24 hours in advance on the city's website and then an agenda be posted about their discussions. And so they are not subject to the Texas Public
I just think it's ironic. We're casting aspersions the whole time and you guys don't even have meeting minutes for these ad hoc committee meetings. So
For the record and respectfully, I don't appreciate you putting words in my mouth and the record can speak for itself.
And so it's just it's hard for me to take it seriously when you say that we don't even read the recommendations. It's just it 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 doesn't make me feel good about what you guys are producing or what the motive is.
Mayor, if I can jump in.
Yeah, please.
Chairman, I'm sorry. Y'all are volunteers.
Yep.
And it's like you're getting frigging cross-examined on the witness stand. This is ridiculous.
Yep.
They've put in how many hours digging into this and come with 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 details and and I'm I'm sorry. I apologize to all the volunteers here. That's I I would never serve on a committee again if if I was put to that in a public meeting. So
Let me just let me just jump in and say this. Look, I I think Chairman Sabo and I have known each other for quite a while. I have a great deal of respect for him. I think it's no no secret what respect I have for staff. And I, you know, generally respect the consultants we hire. I think everybody's coming to this with best intent. I I don't I I don't question anybody's intent. And I don't think and as long as I've known Steve, I've never seen him question anybody's intent. He doesn't. He does question results, which I do as well. I think what we're doing here and and to just be frank about it, we're 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 asking for detailed analysis over a very complex system that has many points of failure while there's a lot of things activity going on. It's a constant motion and our desire to try and get answers quicker, I think, is just worsening the condition by saying by we're getting information in 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 incomplete fashion. I think the committee needs to finish its work. I think we need to get the AMI system up on online so that we can get to the point where we have better options. And then we can make decisions at that point. I mean, I reading through the recommendations they have to 3230 plan. I'm a supporter of the 3230 plan, but I'm also a supporter of what's simple and what gets us to the next step. You know, I'm I'm somewhat influenced by right now what the what the ad hoc committee is saying is like, look, let's get to a point where we're just we're just pulling the Band-Aid off and and allowing things to get caught up without stretching it out for two years. My support of the 3230 plan was let's not give it 90% of the people in the community aren't paying attention to this and they're going to get a bill that says, hey, you owe a couple of hundred dollars. That's going to cause us bigger problems. My thought was the 3230 plan would allow us to do it incrementally over time. Nobody would really see a huge difference in their bill and we'd catch up on the arrears. To be honest with you, at this point, I think let's just put the arrears aside and then get to a point where we have a clean slate and let's deal with what we have to deal put the arrears aside and then get to a point where we have a clean slate, and let's deal with what we have to deal with as with respect to how we fund future projects with us missing them out. I mean, that may be a smarter plan at this point because we are putting a lot of stress on volunteers. We're putting a lot of stress. And I'll say this, we intentionally made, or we initially made this committee, a six-month committee that worked, that met once a month. They have certainly exceeded that mandate. We're, and I have a couple of friends that are on that committee, and talking with them, it's just a lot, and they're doing it with best intentions, but we're putting a lot of strain on them. We're putting a lot of strain on staff. We're putting a lot of strain on those people who are following this passionately. Maybe it's just time, or once we get the recommendations, once everything comes to us, let's not move hastily. But maybe we just need to consider, really consider, let's pull the Band-Aid and start clean, as opposed to trying to Band-Aid our approach. Or try and, you know, here's a better analogy. Anybody who's worked on cars, at some point, when you're trying too hard to make the part work, it's better to throw the part out and buy a new one. And we just seem to be trying to get this engine to work, even though no component of it seems to really work as well as we want it to. And maybe it's, you know, maybe that's what the committee needs to look at is, we just say, sacrifice what we have on the arrears just so we can start a clean slate. I will personally, and I've said this to you personally, privately, I'll personally thank you. I know, remember, Jimmy Davis has been passionate about this. I've heard a lot of people express to me how much you're putting into this. I thank you for what you've put in. Everybody that's on the committee, some of the ones that are texting me, that are watching from home or from their office because they're working late. You know, I thank everybody who's part of the committee, and I thank all staff for what they're doing. I mean, belaboring the point, but look, if staff really felt like it was 85 pages to respond to a two-page memo, you know, maybe they were just trying to be comprehensive. Maybe they were being defensive. I mean, I don't really know. But I do think that they're coming to it with honest intentions. And once we get to the point where we get the full recommendation to the ad hoc committee, I think we need to just put that, we need to consider, and maybe we put it on the committee to say, let's just consider sacrificing what we can sacrifice and starting to the point where AMI comes online, we're a clean slate.
Well put.
Kevin.
Go ahead.
Mayor.
You're good.
Get this right. It's hard to break an old thing, Steve. But, you know, we've had two reports, and you mentioned Raff Tellis, which was the last one I had, and Olson and Olson in the beginning, and they said revenue that wasn't billed, and Olson and Olson was 3.7 to 8.7 million dollars. And then, when you get into Raff Tellis, it goes further along. I've heard numbers up to 13 million that was not billed. And it goes back, and some of them dating back, it says it goes back five years that this has been going on. The only reason, I think, when council made a decision to go to 3032 is from what it was from, you know, the 28th day. But also, that was what from American Water Works Association said that most of them went by, and I guess that's where we ended up at. But, you know, I think, and I mentioned it a month or so ago, we're trying to go back and recover stuff that people says has been going on for five years. I don't know, but that's what the report came out and said, that it was that period of time. And I kind of got carried away here about a month or so ago, and I said, forget about it. Forget about the money. It's like you're sitting there, and you cut a vein, and your vein's bleeding, you're complaining about the blood, all, losing all the blood, but you're not doing anything to close the vein off to stop the blood. And I think that's from what I looked at, or even, but there's been a lot of concern about it. And me, for one, I'm just ready to get it over with. I mean, if it takes blowing off the past money, for my concern about, I don't care about collecting a penny of it. I just want to stop this thing and get us in the right course and billing the money that are the water and wastewater as it should be. And so, you know, I think it, I appreciate you standing up there. It's a, you're the true Stehu that I know, see all this information and help come up with a problem, you know, solving a problem. I think that's key, you know, to be able to do that. So continue to do what you're doing. If you want to, you may not want to after all of this. But, you know, I think, you know, this has brought in more light than we've had before on this. And if this is not the right thing to do on the 3032, we need to go someplace else with it. So I appreciate what you and your committee has done so far, and I appreciate you coming up here.
Member Perez, before you do, I think, member Little had something real quick.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you guys. I serve on a number of boards and committees, mostly unrelated to the city. And I appreciate the time you guys put in. Obviously, you put in a lot of time, your time away from your family, probably some time away from your work. And I just want to say, I appreciate that. I don't think there's a simple answer to this problem. I'd like to see all the recommendations you guys have. And Darren, is this something that the council could vote on, whether to implement their suggestions, their proposals?
Not tonight, but yes, ultimately, in the future, yes, the recommendations, the council will have the opportunity to consider that and decide if you would prefer to go that route.
Yeah, I'd like to see, you know, after a thorough review of all your suggestions and the city's responses, and let's put it to council for a vote and see if we want to implement any changes or, you know, go with the city's recommendations, or break the whole sort of combination of all the above. But again, I appreciate you guys and the gals and all the work you've done.
Yeah, and I think it's still important to note that the 3230 plan, as Mr. Sabo stated, it's only one component of what they're looking at. It's comprehensive. So, I mean, some of us are reacting solely to that and thinking, hey, now's the time to start getting a collusion. Or at least, that's what I'm hearing, and I apologize if I'm summarizing things incorrectly, member Owens, I apologize. I think there's a lot of good work that the committee needs to do. Spoke with one of the members today, and he was, he expressed to me, you know, he thought one way and trivialized an issue and got some better information and realized it was a, it was a bigger concern than even, than even thought, which is just one, that's one component, one of the tasks that the committee's doing. We put the committee in place. Let's let them finish their job. I think when we get, maybe it's better that we stop getting so much intermediate information that we're reacting to and throwing things off course. Get the, let them complete their work. And then, then we can just make some clearer decisions over a meeting or two so that we're not, I just feel like we're interfering personally. I feel like you're all coming in, you're sending us these portions of the report because we're requesting more information. We're just interfering. So, Mayor, as I had stated, committee's due to be complete in July, August, somewhere around there. That's about the end of y'all's mandate. Do you believe that you'll roughly be complete with your review about that time?
As was hinted earlier, there are some of us ready to leave tonight.
I would not, I wouldn't, I would much, I would very much hope that that doesn't end up being the case. While I did not originally support the committee as a body, I do believe that the committee is doing good and valuable work. And if we're gonna, since we formed the committee, we need to let them complete. Let them get us a report. Let staff make their recommendations. Give us either ors. And then see if there's a benefit for us to wait to implement some of those recommendations until AMI comes on. The start-stop-think, I think it's just clearly frustrating, y'all. It's clearly frustrating us. I think it's clearly frustrating staff, and at this point, nobody's really, we're not really getting the best work out of any of them when it's so frustrating. So-
If I can offer one thing, council member, on that, on the point of timing. So, to reiterate, we were asked to accelerate a recommendation on 3230, given the money-related implications of that, consequences of related to budget and billing, et cetera, et cetera. But as part of the recommendation, and you'll read this in our documents, is that, to some degree, timing is of the essence because the best opportunity, if you will, to cut the head off and end a program like 3230 is when billing is at a minimum. Because de facto, the arrears in consumption between when it was used and when it was billed is lower now than it will be in the middle of summer.
Yeah, and I see your recommendation is to, is to end it by June 2021. And I totally agree, or I totally agree with that thought and concept. I just, I struggle, I struggle to be decisive at this point personally, when I still feel like there's still a lot of balls in the air. I mean, if we, we could possibly make a decision the next meeting to pause the 3230 plan and maybe address this concern of the committee, where we pause it, we just bill people for their consumption for a time period as best we can, and then we come back to a period where we made a decision either to go with 3230 plan, just cancel all of it, all the arrears, and deal with the funding implications in the next budget year, or some half-measure in between. Maybe that's what we, where we need to get to, since there just seems to be so much, since we asked you to elevate it for that reason, you know, maybe we get some use out of that decision.
Thank you for your time.
Before we, before we move on, what I'd like to see, and I think what you're hearing, the committee itself, there was a point in time between the committee and the staff where there was, there was a great amount and a tremendous amount of collaboration and working together. You heard it tonight, and again, I've attended just about every single meeting. It's at least portions of the meetings. I've had several meetings on top of meetings, so I've had to juggle back and forth. So I've been a part of it as a liaison. And I've witnessed the committee and the staff working together on this. I've also witnessed that very early on, in January, and we made the request, and I reiterated that request, to accelerate 3230 recommendation because I know it's going to be an issue, if it comes to us, that we have to wrestle with. And it's not going to necessarily be a one-meeting type of question. It's going to take a couple of meetings for us to wrestle with it and come to a conclusion, either accept, reject, modify, whatever. And, and so, knowing that, the committee did, they asked for certain things around 3230, only to get a delay. And whether that was intended, whether that was just, it took that much time to get the information, or whatever the case may be, even during that, there was a spirit of cooperation moving forward, so much so, and what I would like to see is a spirit of cooperation between the city and the staff towards a resolution on 3230. Instead of us versus them, why not put everybody together and come up with a resolution of 3230? I'm hearing, you know, members of this body even saying, look, if there was the proper resolution in front of me, I might support it. And I've heard several members say that. I think a majority of the members saying that. So I, that's where I would like to see. Second, and the next thing, there is a one-time bill true-up plan written by one of our own staff members. It was never sent to council. But it was sent and circulated around staff. We have it. It was written on April the 1st. It would be real interesting to see that plan up against what the committee has recommended. And then have the committee and the staff sit down and say, how do we meld these two together? And bring that to the city council? But instead, this was marching through, and somewhere between April the 12th and April the 24th, 25th, there was, there was a definitive time where there was no more cooperation. And, and I'm disappointed that the cooperation hasn't continued through. I know the motivation of the committee. Chairman Sabo, you represented the eight members of this committee very well tonight, as you always do. You're the epitome of professionalism, and I appreciate that. You didn't accuse anyone. You simply asked questions. And questions that deserve answers, okay? At the same time, I don't think our staff is deliberately or out to get, or out to stop, or out to do anything. Do I think, in certain cases, there's a tremendous workload? And now dealing with the committee, it's causing some issues in their, in their work? Sure. This is additional work. I get that. But if we're going to build trust with the 40,000 customers that buy water and sewer and garbage collection from the city of Pearland, we have to come together, citizens and staff, and agree on some things. Have to. That was the intent behind putting an ad hoc group together. Because if we don't, these eight members are going to go out and say, they threw an 85-page, 850-pound weight just down on top of our head and said, go away. That's how they viewed it. Not saying that's how it was meant. The communication, and our communications director can tell you this, communications are two ways. Message sent and message received have to be in a line. And if they're not, there's a disconnect. But I can tell you, the message sent might have been one thing from the staff. Message received by the committee were two very different things. I've sat in meetings in both. I've heard from both. And there's a disconnect between the two. And for that, I'm disappointed. And which resulted in this tonight. This had to be aired publicly. Every single one of the meetings, we got better than minutes. Every single meeting is video from start to finish. Every word, every thought, every eye roll, whatever, it's caught by camera, as well as every cough that's on speaker. Everything is caught. So it is fully transparent to the citizens of our community, as well as this body, as well as any member of staff. And so I'd like to see us come together and somehow instruct staff and committee to work together on a resolution to 3230. It is the most, and I'll just say this, as a member of this community, not an elected official, a year-plus ago, I watched 3230 being marched through. Not a single citizen came to the podium when it was sitting right there, spoke in favor of it. Not a single one. Instead, there was at least five members of this community, me included, spoke against it. And none of us taken seriously. At least outwardly. I shouldn't, let me take that back. We felt like as though we were not heard. We have eight members of this community that we set aside, and we need to listen to them tonight. Any other comments, questions, concerns?
Yeah, I would, I would just say that, you know, the reason, the reason we went to 3230, and I don't think we're flawed with the idea of 3230. I think what we're flawed in some portions of its implementation. I mean, essentially, we were presented with three options. We can remove, we can just forget about the arrears. We can bill everybody all at once, or we can try and do it over time. We're still somewhat presented with those three options in some capacity. I think, right now, what we're questioning is the implementation of the effort of trying to collect the arrears, but not do, not send anybody a high bill without a true, good explanation as to what they owe and when they owe it.
Agreed.
And what we'll get from the committee in broad strokes is probably, we need to collect what people owe, what owe us, and they need to pay over time so it's not a huge issue. And I think we'll get to there. So the concept of 3230 is, is, the intent of 3230 is probably where we'll end up. It's just a matter, I mean, maybe, maybe it's best to just, since there's so much in the air, maybe it's best we get to a point where we just say, in, in, in the spirit of what Mr. Sabo was stating, Chairman Sabo was stating, we take his concept, hey, we're going to get into the higher-end months, we're still uncertain, we pause it. We get to a point where we make a decision, we unpause with our new decision. And that way, at least in the interim, we're doing less damage.
If, if I may, on, on some of the discussion about like the, an April memo that wasn't shared with council, to, to echo Member Perez's point, I, I think there's fundamentally three solutions. And the, the solution that I, I feel like is being discussed is a, some version of that was presented to us. That was the solution to, um, bill everything at one time. And so, and, and kind of to that point, I, I feel like there's really three, in, in terms of choosing how you're going to address the arreage, there's three issues here. And despite all the conversation, we're still at those main three. It's, let's say, let, let's just forget about it and, and move on and, and we'll collect the, the rates through whatever we have to do. We can all upfront, try to figure out how much people owe and then send them an invoice for that large amount. Or three, you, you kind of spread it out over time. And so I, I do, I mean, respectfully to people who disagreed with that, I, I think that there, there was a significant amount of consideration that we had an unprecedented financial situation when this was being discussed in the, the spring and summer of 2020, where you, you have unemployment shoot through the roof faster than anything we've ever seen with, with this COVID-induced economy. And the idea of sending people at that time, two months of, of billing and saying, this is what you owe through no fault of your own, wasn't very tenable. So fundamentally, I, I haven't heard a solution that isn't a flavor of one of those three options. And I think that we reasonably chose an option that took into consideration, um, not just the real life that, you know, some people, we, we know that something like 60% or 70% of Americans don't have the money in the bank to cover $400 emergency. So a, a lot of, that would be a, a huge burden for a lot of folks to send them two back months of, of water billing. Um, and especially in the midst of that pandemic, I, I, I don't think that was the right decision. So can appreciate that there are differences of opinion with regard to one of those three options, um, but, but certainly think that due consideration was given as to, to why that path was selected. Um, I, I would like to say I tremendously appreciate the, the work of, of the committee. I, I think there's a lot of other questions that are being looked into and addressed that are, are not part of, of that three flavors discussion. Um, especially it, it seems like the biggest point of contention now and, and one that I'm interested in looking into further is the discussion of the calculation of the arreage and, and, and base rates and, and what's included versus what's not and, and what's considered. So I, I would greatly appreciate the opportunity to sit with the recommendation and, and to compare the, the calculation and methodology used by the committee versus, um, you know, what we've seen previously and, and to make that comparison. And, and as Member Perez said, it, it's, it's complicated. Um, and, and so I would, yeah, I, I will certainly give that, that the due respect that it deserves and, and look into that with a, um, with, with a tremendously open mind for, for resolving it. And I, I agree with what the mayor said regarding that, the spirit of cooperation, that's something that, um, I, I've been about the whole time. I, I think to, and, and will continue to be about. I, I, I think, a- and again, I, I will put that out from the council. I would ask that that's also reciprocated. I think that when there's members of the committee, and of course, the committee is a body and not just one person, but kind of similar to the council and the staff, but when there's committee members online making accusations of criminality or of impropriety by the, the city staff or, or city council members, that, that doesn't also foster that spirit of cooperation. So I'm, I'm happy to work hand in hand and do everything to facilitate that and will continue to. But let's, let's make sure that we're promoting that on both sides of the aisle.
Agreed. And good, good points, and I, I appreciate you, uh, the way you put that, Orlando.
Real quick, Mayor. So right before, or I guess, as this meeting was going on, we got forwarded a memo dated May 20th from the citizens committee. I assume that was from, from you and Mr. Sabo? Yeah. Do you know when that was sent out to city staff? I guess that's, well, we got it sent at 6:39 out to council.
I can, I can address. I mean, yes, I think there were voted recommendations last week. Chairman Sabo forwarded me what you saw on the, uh, here just a little while ago. Um, I forwarded that instead of me sending it to the whole council, I forwarded it to Clay and said, this probably should be sent to the whole council.
Yeah, it should've been included in the agenda packet.
Sure.
So just to be clear, we, we didn't get that till the mayor sent that to me, that I know of.
Okay. Well, I mean, my bigger issue is you read through Raff Tellus and it's all about culture, 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 culture. And after tonight, we're no better off than we were two years ago. A- and then we, we talk about trust and rebuilding trust, and we can't rebuild trust with the eight community volunteers. And that, that's the issue here. I mean, and, and y'all put in countless hours, you come to us with unanimous. And again, I remind everybody, we didn't put a bunch of buddies together. These are eight very diverse folks. If they can come up with something unanimous, um, I, I have a hard time not going with that recommendation, especially when it aligns with Raff Tellus. And so I, I'm, since we just saw this, you know, a, a few hours ago, it's hard to say I, I want to back it 100%, but, um, I'm, I'm fine moving forward to, i- if city staff can work with them, that's great. But dumping another 85 pages, that's ridiculous. Um, I don't know what was meant, but that was clearly communicated. And, um, yeah, we still have a culture and trust issue, period. And, and we might solve the 3230, there's still going to be a culture and trust issue that we've got to get to the bottom of.
Remember Cam Carr?
Uh, I just want to clarify a couple of comments really quickly. I, I'm very thankful for people who take the time out of their lives to do municipal service. You've done that on the council, Mr. Sabo. I'm doing that now. I have, I have three children under four. Uh, I'm, I'm away from my professional interests. I'm away from my sports teams, et cetera. Um, but what I take very seriously is that we have to get the issue right. And it sounds like we still have question marks outstanding. Um, and so I think what Member Perez said earlier was very important. I think there's fatigue all the way around from all, all different parties. And, and I think we just need to get everything on the table, have an honest, forthright discussion, and, and where can we get to? And I, I think Member Carbon is right. We, we want citizens to give input and we want to move the ball forward. Um, so I just want to thank you guys for doing that. It just, we need to move in ways that are forward, that don't cast aspersions. And we, we, the part that I had a hard time with, and I'm going to, I'm going to be that is, I've read every single document that has been produced. And when people say that I didn't, or some of these people didn't, it, it's hard to choke back on that. Just understand, uh, everything that's produced, I take seriously because citizens of our city did it, and this is what they feel is worth their time. And that, that means something to me. This time is something we don't get back. I want to thank the board and everybody involved who's put their time into this, whether they're on the council side, the staff side, or on the committee side. Time is something we don't get back. I appreciate yours.
Very fair, very fair. Thank you, Councilmember. Any other comments?
Yes, this is kind of a for staff, and I'm not suggesting any recommendations or anything out of this. I'm just trying to get a better understanding. When this plan, the 3230 first came to us, I think I was the, the only member of council who was kind of saying, I really just want to give everyone a bill so they just kind of know and catch up. And I was told at the time that we didn't really have the capacity to do that efficiently. So I said, okay, at that point, let's get behind the 3230 plan. But, and this memo that did just kind of come to us, I'm reading some of this, and one of the bullet points y'all have is the citizens may not clearly understand 3230. And since this thing has been implemented, I can tell you, that is the truest statement I've ever read. Um, having to talk to people continually about what it is, what it means and what it entails. I mean, we had a woman here just even tonight that I, I think it just, everything we talked about was just going clearly, um, out the window. So, um, again, from my own education, once we get AMI on and it, let's say that we were to present multiple options to residents, because this was a question asked previously as well, we continued forward just hypothetically, again, not suggesting anything, hypothetically continued forward with 3230, but then had the ability to offer the true-ups as was said here tonight that we would when AMI finally comes on, which we've been told is coming, you know, just around the corner for a while now. Um, would it be any easier on staff to, to continue 3230 with AMI? Or would it be even manageable to run multiple options? So you had some people asking for true-up, some people wanting to 30, 3230 and, um, just kind of, we had multiple options on the table and let the, the, um, the customer decide. Would that be more difficult to manage than just having a single action on the table and just, you know, wiping the slate clean, the slate clean, um, so to speak? I'm just kind of curious for some feedback there.
You looking for feedback tonight on this, sir? Or can we get back to you at a later time on this?
I think we hesitated to offering. I mean, what you're describing is the true-up that, that was a part of, that's been there and we've reported on, so that needs to.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I, I guess I ask this question kind of generally, like, are these things that are being put forward, do you kind of just consider one to be easier than the other? And, and I'm speaking specifically once AMI comes on board, because I know that's been kind of the looming, once we get this, once we get this, once we get this. Or do you not know because we don't have it yet? So we don't really?
It'd be hard to tell without looking at all the whole processes that are in place. It's nice to have one and go with one and go forward on that. But then again, just like it's been indicated, you've got customers that are not going to be able to pay for something like that. You know, you've got customers that don't have the $400 or the, or whatever it is that's saved up to do something. So it should be a choice. So it's something that, that's the reason I'm, when I stood up here and I said that there, you know, when AMI does come on board, we can look at something like that. Do we want to look at something that true-up later on where, you know, where it's lower, say in December, January of coming up this year and next year, something to think about paying everything in, in full where it's a lower usage timeframe? That's another option that you can think of. So.
Yeah. And, and I, we need to get to a point where we can move on. Uh, Member Carbon, you have something?
A lot of the questions up here, I, I think have been addressed in what was sent out from the ad hoc committee. I'd be in favor of, of bringing this back on the next agenda item. And unless staff can, can tell us why we shouldn't move forward with it. Um, I mean, we've got Raff Tellus and we've got the ad hoc committee and unanimously headed in that direction. Um, and it, it looks like time is of the essence. I, I wouldn't mind seeing this on the next council agenda.
I, I would just like the chance to review it before saying this is the direction we're going to do and move forward.
We have, we have three weeks. We have three weeks.
But, but then it's just given that that's.
Can we get all the recommendations? I mean, I, I agree with Mr. Carbon. If everybody's aligned, that's fine. It just, these all work together. There's not a standalone item on any of this. And, and to do one and not the other, it's, it's like having a football team and not having a left tackle, right? Doesn't make sense.
So it, so real quick, so it's, it's my understanding, uh, Mr. Sabo, that all of the recommend, so the, the charter, so we had the first three had to do basically with Raff Tellus report. And then fourth was infrastructure and anything outside of Raff Tellus report, correct? So it's my understanding, other than 3230, all recommendations have been sent to council, correct? No? Which one do we left, we left with? Okay. There's a lot of work. So to bring, to bring council up to date, there's a subcommittee that has been meeting and talking about meters. They have uncovered some discrepancies in what, uh, we, the, the city has is as far as meter reads and then versus someone's actual bill, uh, maybe off several, you know, tens or hundreds or even thousands of gallons. Um, and, and so while it may not be every single account, they're uncovering more and more of that as they review some of the data, uh, that's, that's coming out from the city. And so that's part of what this subcommittee's doing. The hard part is, is their recommendations on the tail end of that when they've got a 3230, you know, plan, you know, now. Uh, but obviously they've got a, a workload between now and, and mid-July. We can re-up and, and extend their time if we choose to. Uh, but I would like to see us, what I would like to see, since there is a spirit, seems to be amongst council, to, to do something with 3230 or at least review it in depth, is, is, is to have staff and the committee work together on some plan that would take their plan and, and maybe a modified plan with staff and modify it and work and come back to council. And I think we could do that in, in June. But it's a work product that the, that the city and the sta, the, excuse me, the staff and the citizens have come up with together, um, in, in possibly presenting, you know, moving away from 3230. And the other thing, Ms. Massey, I'd like to, and we can, you don't have to answer tonight, I want to make sure that we get this to council. But it is my understanding that if we did a true-up and we billed somebody the arreage amount, whatever that amount is, 100 bucks, 200 bucks, 50 bucks, um, that somebody could put that portion into a payment plan and they could pay it out over time. And, and if that's the case, we need to know that because that's, that's important information. So if they get a bill, it's not like if they can't afford $200, but they can afford 10, whatever, then it can get, it can be paid out over some amount of time. And my question to New World, if it can't, why can't it? This goes back to New World and our, our processes. Uh, and in 2021, not being able to do that, um, seems ridiculous to me if they can't. Um, but I, I'll, I'll allow you to write a memo to council and let, let's do it that way. I do want to move on with our meeting. We do have a couple more lengthy issues to discuss. This has been a good discussion. I think you're hearing it, that, that we appreciate the work of all the committee. Um, it's been important work. It's been hard work. Uh, you guys have taken it incredibly serious, uh, and we appreciate that. I know I appreciate it. I appreciate the time and effort and the meetings that you've been putting in. So, um, uh, so does that conclude, Steve, y'all's presentations for tonight? Okay. So I, I, if, if it's possible to get that in writing and then go ahead and forward, and then that's something that we can take up in our June meeting, if that's fine, that way we've got it in ahead of time rather than being presented cold, uh, and then we have that. But I, but I think it's, but I, I think as, as I've alluded to, we're, we're seeing some discrepancies. And, and again, I think this is, uh, either our readers aren't doing something, our endpoints aren't doing something right, there's something that's, that's off. Uh, it's not intentional, but for anybody in the public that might be watching and listening, this isn't something that's intentional. No one's going into the system and, and doing this. Uh, this is in, lack of a better term, I'm not an IT guy, it's an interface issue of some sort, uh, how it's integrating into our system. So, um, this is what's important to me, that we allow everyone to kind of go down these trails to see what's there, because if we uncover something, we have the ability to fix it. If we go down these trails and we don't find anything, then the citizens have done everything that they can, they've looked under every stone, and then they can agree that our system is correct. Both of those are good for us. Both of those help us build trust in the system. So I think it's important that we, that we allow them to, to complete their work, even if it ends up, you know, we go into August or, or September in completing some of this to get it right. As, as Member Cam Carr said, it's real important that whatever we do, we do it and we get it right. So, um, I thank you for your time.
I can just ask one question of staff, if, from a, just a procedural thing. If we could get, uh, the subcommittee minutes as well as the memo that was just sent to us tonight added in line with the rest of the information for the, for the ad hoc committee so it's easier for us to have to go back so we don't have to check emails and things so it's all in one place? If we get those added, uh, subcommittee information as well, that would be appreciated.
Yeah, it, just in, in fairness of the hour and the contention that's in the room tonight, Mr. Davis, I, I hope you appreciate that.
I, I would also say if we're, if there's any question about the meter reads, then I, I think that should be, um, reason enough not to, at our next meeting, send people lump sum bill based on what their meter read is. But if that could just be evaluated in the suite of options that's presented to us at the next meeting, that'd be great.
All right. Let's move on. Uh, new business item number six. Uh, Member Little, would you prepare, uh, present that, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration of possible action.
Consideration of possible action, resolution number R 2021 dash 107, so moved.
Second.
Uh, motion and a second, staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. This is the renewal of our wind, uh, insurance, um, put that out. And, uh, uh, we always do, uh, try to inventory all of our facilities. So we make sure we have a good inventory and those are all valued properly. Uh, the premium for this year is about 110,000 more than prior year. Uh, just, uh, but that is the, the rate that's competitive, put out there. And so recommending consideration, we do need to get this in place, uh, for the upcoming season. Nothing to add.
Any questions, comments, concerns by council?
No, no objection to this item, but, uh, maybe just for clarification, is this an item that we can self-insure? Uh, or is it just the value somewhat different than what we do with?
Yeah, I think, uh, there's better experts, but my, you know, this is basically our, our reinsurance for the higher levels. I mean, they all have premiums. So in an essence, you are self-insuring for, um, not premiums, the deductibles. So, but to have that kind of a risk for the entire, I think would be a tall, for all of our buildings, be a tall order.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, reason given by the insurance company for $110,000 increase, which is about 17%.
Yeah. Melissa's online or anybody's on that can answer that, Amy? Or sorry, that's Lorraine. Sorry. I have to get back down there, I apologize.
Thank you.
This is Melissa.
Oh, she's on.
Yes. The primary reason for the increase is twofold. One, the insurance companies are trying to recoup their losses from her, uh, from Harvey, from the storms that hit the Louisiana and Alabama coast last year, and also from the ice storm that we also took a loss in back in February. The second piece of it is we did add Fire Station Eight to this, um, policy last year. And we're given a waiver of payment until this renewal. That's a very minor piece of it, but it is playing some part in the 18% increase that we've got.
Thank you.
So we added a several million dollar asset to the, to the asset base plus.
Yeah, that might go to some of the answer from Mr. Perez. I mean, that building alone was, you know, seven million dollars and multiply that across our inventory. So.
Right. Big increase. Remember?
So that was, uh, our, what, risk manager?
Okay, sorry, for the record, Melissa Solinger is our risk manager in HR.
So I guess tell, I, I see in the write-up, we've got McGriff, Siebles, Williams, that we're contracted with them to bid all this out. What, what are they doing for us and what are we paying them? I assume it's under 50K because we haven't seen it?
Yes, sir. They act as our risk consultant to basically bid out all of our property liability that TML does not cover, which would be our flood insurance, our, um, windstorm, bonds, that type of thing. Uh, Joe Glossy is our representative from McGriff and he's also on the line if you guys want to ask him any direct questions.
I guess it's.
Oh, and I'm sorry.
My question to, to staff is, we added a head count and we're still using outside consultant. I'm struggling there. I thought one of the reasons to bring on the risk manager was to help manage all this internally.
I don't know where the, uh, when and where the head count came, but, uh, you know, obviously the city's growing and it's not just this piece of wind, it's, uh, multiple. And she's, you know, man, that position is able to manage it. We can inventory all that and share that back to you. I'd be happy to do that.
And in answer to your question as to what we pay them, we pay them 40,000 a year to be our consultant. Previously they were the broker of record. And, um, instead of just acting as broker of record, now they're also doing consulting services for us also.
Any other questions, concerns, comments? Saying none, Madam Secretary, we call for the vote.
Member Little?
No.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
No.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
No.
Member Cam Carr?
What is the count right now?
Three noes. Two yeses. Three noes and two yeses, is that right?
Aye.
There are three noes and two yeses, correct.
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
The motion carries four to three.
All right, moving to matters removed consent agenda. Uh, member Perez, would you go back and pick up item I as in igloo?
Item I, if you'll bear with me, I will get to it in just a moment. Consideration of possible action, resolution number R 2021 dash 103, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, uh, staff report.
Sorry, which one are we on now?
Aye.
Aye.
Igloo.
Aye. MMD number two.
Oh, I apologize. Okay, thank you. Um, so the council has, uh, confirmation powers for this Pearland Municipal Management District number two. Uh, the geographic bounds of it are described there, but this is a special district. Um, and it has to come to you for confirmation of the board members. And so it's up to you to, as a policy matter, to, uh, either approve or deny or ask for more information on those. Nothing to add.
All right, um, into council questions, comments, concerns, uh, member Cam Carr?
Uh, so just to give clarity to the public and to the members of the council. So MMD two, like what is the geographic boundaries more or less along 288? Is that correct?
Right, Matt, yeah.
And so, uh, this, this board has, has been meeting, um, for a while. I've kind of kept tabs on it because it's kind of in my neighborhood. And, um, there's a, there's a member on there, uh, Mr. Reader, who is, used to live in the area of Shadow Creek Ranch. Uh, he no longer lives in, in the district or the area, does not work for an employer, doesn't meet any of the qualifications, has been getting a waiver. Um, and, and I, I brought this to the attention, uh, of the board as I was keeping an eye, listening to their, their meetings. And I just said, you know, we have a gigantic equity issue. We hear routinely that there are people who, uh, do not have chances to serve on, on a board or on a council or be involved in, in local government. And, um, we, we have several folks that would probably be interested, but they're not giving this opportunity. Um, we appreciate Mr. Reader for his service, but he, he doesn't really meet the qualifications anymore. Um, and we do need to have opportunities for other folks to come along. Um, and, and so my, my comment to this was, um, I, I think I can get there without Mr. Reader on there. They, they decided to, to add forward, uh, this item. And, and I've just spoken, I think we need to give opportunities to folks who actually live here to be involved, uh, in civic life. And this is a good opportunity to learn about what we're doing, to be a positive for the city of Pearland in our future. Um, and so I would make motion to the council that we either enable this item to get, uh, a more representative group, or maybe we adjust this item, uh, to amend.
Yeah, let me, uh, before we make that a motion, real quick, uh, I'm going to, I concur on this that, you know, we've, we've got, businesses, property owners and, and many employees of those businesses that could serve on this municipal management district. I mean, this, this appointee was an original, just an appointee, uh, from one of our political, um, office holders. Um, and, and since then, his last time up, he simply got a waiver because he was, and I can't remember the, the official term. Matt, you can help me out, but you know, one of the other members was able to give him a waiver that, that allowed him to, to stay on. I, I don't disparage the, the fact that the man has been serving, but he doesn't, I think he lives over in the Bel Air West U, west, southwest part of Houston. He, he's not a taxpayer in the district. Uh, he doesn't work for one, he doesn't have a landowner. And so what I'd like to see, and this may help you with a, with an amendment, I think the other two members that are presented here tonight are fine. Uh, maybe what we, what I'd like to see is these members from now on go through our normal, uh, application process, where they at least fill out our applications. Those applications come to us. We then know, you know, where they live, who they are, uh, those types of things. So maybe a, a, an amending motion to, uh, striking Mr. Reader, but accepting the other two and allow staff to put, uh, put MMD, MMD number two out to our people as a opportunity to serve. And with that many people that live in Shadow Creek, we should be able to find someone who, uh, who would like to serve on this board. Matt, help me from a timing perspective. I know we have a, there's a, at some point, there's a tax rate and a vote and those types of things. But if, if I understand it correctly, that's not until August or September. So we, we, we've got a little bit of time here that we could take some applications and move on this.
Sure, that, that is correct. Um, and what you would want to do is have the district take the applications and then just forward that application to you when they, because their job is to actually review, decide who the candidate is and just present you with a candidate. So they, they'll still have six members, so they'll still be able to function, set the tax rate, do those types of things.
I, I wanted to restate how maybe we can do that amendment. I think, like I said, I think the other two are fine. They, they meet the requirements, but the, the one doesn't.
So Darren, just, uh, make sure we're getting this correct. Under resolution 2021 103, under the fourth wherethes, the district desires that the city council, city of Pearland, Texas, reappoint person A, B, C. We just, we make a motion to just say persons B and C.
Excuse me. Uh, yes, what we would need to do is have a motion to amend the resolution to remove the appointment of, uh, Mr. Reader. Uh, and then a new resolution would be, if, if approved, uh, then the, uh, new resolution would be prepared for execution based on that amendment.
Okay. We need to make the motion then to amend at this point. So, uh, I'd like to make a motion on R 2021 103 that we amend, uh, to adjust, uh, for the reappointment of Ruchi Patel and Cindy McGill, um, only, under R 02021 103.
Second.
Okay, I'm just looking down here at the, at the resolution, making sure I had the names. So we have a motion and a second. I, I want to make sure, are those all of the, the ones? What about Stan Beard?
It's, I'm sorry, uh, go ahead, Matt.
Mr. Beard chose not to be reappointed this.
Gotcha.
So that's why. Cindy McGill's replacing.
I knew there was one and I couldn't remember. Thank you. Okay, we're good there. So we have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions on that? So we're voting on an amendment to the motion to, uh, move forward with Mr. Patel and Ms. McGill, but strike Mr. Reader as a, as a reappointee at this time. And we will send that back to, uh, the MMD to take applications for other appointees. With that, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote on that amending motion.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, so we have an amended motion on the table, uh, that, that's been approved. Now we have to vote on the final motion as that amending, the amending motion as the final motion. Madam Secretary, I call, well, any other comments, questions? Don't want to listen. With that, Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero.
All right, thank you. Moving forward, uh, other business, there is none. Item 10, mayor council issues for city council discussion. Uh, council input and discussion regarding establishing a municipal drainage utility and associated fees. This is just a, a discussion item. So I will defer to staff initially and the council members that moved, brought it forward.
Sure, just to set the stage a little bit, uh, this is a topic that came up a couple of years ago. Uh, council last, uh, that time, uh, did not act. And, uh, so we did, there's been interest, uh, again. And, uh, we reshared some of that information, uh, a couple of months ago, month ago so. And that's been prepared and in your packet for discussion. So it's purely council feedback and, uh, any will of the council or consensus, we can move forward from there or not.
Okay, so I'll defer to the members that brought it forward.
Let member Orlando go first. Um, I, I didn't have any remarks prepared. I, I just thought this was something that's, uh, appropriate to discuss, especially in light of recent events today. We have people emailing us and, and tagging us on Facebook that they have, um, raw sewage backing up into their, their yards. It seems that anytime we, we have a, um, one of these increasingly frequent storms, we're, we're having flooding in, in communities. And so, uh, our general fund budget is increasingly pressed to, to fund myriad priorities that we don't have enough money for. Our streets and sidewalks, our fleet, um, maintenance of our facilities, any number of things. Uh, this is something that I think time and time again, we've seen is, uh, one of the biggest priorities is, is keeping people safe and dry in their homes. Um, and, and keeping them able to access our streets. And so, uh, given the continued problem, having multiple events every year that, that cause flooding in our community, on the brink of hurricane season that, uh, you know, is, is rumored to be, uh, an active one. And also with the notice that we're not going to be getting any funding from the state for our, uh, large drainage priorities, I, I think it's appropriate for council to discuss and consider. All bad second. Obviously, I, uh, is the one who, I guess originally initiated this, uh, going a couple of years ago. Um, you know, I've, I, I'm in support of us having something that's established as an enterprise fund that we can focus on, uh, the storm, our storm sewer system or drainage system as a utility. As the point I had made, um, before is that it seems, um, it seems to be, um, the Paul that pays a lot of Peters, uh, when it comes to our general fund. Uh, we, we are constantly underfunding this issue. And, um, as member Orlando had stated, um, you know, it's, it's becoming more and more critical that we get proactive about some of these projects. Um, so, um, you know, we don't really have an action item for tonight. I think, you know, maybe it's worthy of us, uh, as a council to say, you know, we can't, we can't do anything decisive. Uh, but maybe it's worthy if we can get, you know, four other members or two, uh, three other members, I apologize, uh, other than myself to state, this is something that they want to move forward with. And then staff can start teeing it up, um, uh, as a, um, as an actionable item. I, I do think, you know, my suggestion was we do it stair step. So we're not trying to do everything at once. You know, do, do we want to move forward with the fee, yes or no? Do we want it to be voter initiative, yes or no? And then, you know, once, uh, once we have the fee in place and we know that we're going to treat the, uh, storm sewer as a utility and, and fund it through, um, an enterprise fund, then we can start putting in the structural controls and discuss that kind of in broad. I think maybe where we got a little lost before, uh, and this is a presumption, is we were trying to do too much. And I think maybe there were some that were supportive of, supportive of the fee, but not necessarily supportive of all the controls. Or there may be some that are supportive of the fee, but not necessarily want to take it to the voters or may not necessarily want to take, have council make the decision. You know, maybe we do this a piece at a time. That way we kind of all can agree on, okay, we're this far, but we're not that far. At, at least that's, uh, that's my suggestion. So maybe if there's enough of us to say, look, we'd like to get an actionable item, just discuss, do we want to move forward with the fee? And then once we say yes to that and we've taken action, then we take the next step, uh, whatever we deem appropriate, uh, from there.
I had some prepared remarks, unless you.
I'll, I'll be quick then. Thank you, Mayor. I'll, so I was supportive of this previously. I'm still supportive of this. So I'll just say, you know, my hand is in the air for this one. Um, I'll, the same thing that I said last time, I'll echo this time that I think it should be really honed in on capital projects and maybe recapitalization of, uh, infrastructure that may not be performing as well. I don't think it should go toward personnel. And that's it, that's for me. That's hopefully as succinct as I can be.
Only way I would vote for this at all, if it went to the voters. This may be called a fee, but it's adding a new tax. It's about, it's what it amounts to. And, and, and I'm not going to be the one that sets up here and, and, uh, to add a new tax unless we go to the voters and let them see, you know, what it is. Come out with what, uh, amount as it is right now. And what we, what had been talked about previously was to come in and then, and it was the, I guess five, it was one with five to seven, uh, cent tax on there. And then, uh, it looked at coming in and every three years to look at. to look at it, to raise it up. It's what it amounts to. And so, the only way that I would do it, and looking at it of what we have here right now, you got six, you need 16 people to start out. Right now, your general fund, 65%, goes to salary and benefits out of your general fund. That's why we're not able to do the $7.3 million a year on sidewalks and streets. Yeah, you sit and smile. But if you want to raise tax, you tell the people out there, oh, I want to raise a tax to you every three years. But, you know, if you want to do it, put it out there, let the people vote, vote for it. And if they want to be taxed again, and tell them, be truthful with it. Say, hey, there's an opportunity every three years. We're going to come in and raise this stuff. And lay out to it, and give them a budget the first year. You're not going to have the money, you know, in the first year to do anything, but you're going to have to hire 16 people and equipment. So you've got a million or so dollars that you've got the first year coming in on a deficit side of it. But, no. I would not, you know, unless it goes out to the voters to approve a new tax for them, I would not support it once.
Member Little?
Yeah, I can't believe I'm hearing myself say that. I agree with Member Owens. To me, it seems like a tax. Our small businesses are coming out of, you know, this pandemic, and to hit them with a, with amounts over $1,000 a year on average. And, you know, citizens have been struggling too. So I would agree to put it on the referendum and not to pass it as a governing body.
Member Kamkar?
So I'd like to just go ahead and prepare my thoughts. This is something to take very seriously. In 2017, we had one of the worst events nature's ever produced. It hit our region, Hurricane Harvey. Harvey set the continental landfall record in the United States, for those who don't know. It was 61 inches in the Sabine Pass area, close in East Texas. In our region, our neighbors received somewhere between 55 and 58 inches of torrential rain in four days. You know, in our region, our local experts believe we were given God's mercy because we only received about 49 in Pearland, according to the studies that were done thereafter. We actually probably got only 80% of what our neighbors got. At that time, I think we had over 400 high-water rescues, numerous people displaced. And that was for 80% of what everybody else got. In the aftermath of this cataclysmic storm, our fellow citizens took action. Some worked with local leaders like Ed Emmett to pass a $2 billion-plus bond issue. Some worked at the state of Texas to secure more dollars to protect our parents and our grandparents from rising waters, $1.9 billion, to be relatively precise. In our jurisdiction, we commissioned a study. And that study says that there is over $1 billion in projects just in Pearland that were cited that needed to be done to bring more safety to the Pearland families that live here. Over $1 billion with a B. I think we have the opportunity, gentlemen, to safely ignore this issue, if we choose to. We have the opportunity to ignore the storms, they're getting larger. We have the opportunity to ignore the hurricane season that is starting now in May instead of June. I think we actually have the opportunity to say to our citizens and our neighbors, these problems are too large. I think we can hide behind science and engineers. We can put off, we can put off a stiff upper lip and look at our problems straight in the face and say enough is enough. I believe the challenge is not the water. I don't think it's complex drainage equations. It's not a challenge about outfall depths. It's not about floodplains, the challenge is us. I believe we have the leaders in the room today who can guide us to Pearland and a future that we want to live in. But we must be willing to stand tall and make the necessary sacrifices. I believe these vital sacrifices are necessary for that every Pearland family can live in a future free of fear. Free of the fear of rising water. A future where senior citizens do not go to sleep with anxiety on rainy days. A future where Pearland parents don't have to worry about crossing high water to pick up their children from school. That's the decision, gentlemen.
Maybe we don't have our priorities right then. You know, everything we've got drains into Clear Creek. Everything comes out of the Houston area, comes out of Simba, Braysby, goes into Clear Creek.
I agree with you.
And so, you know, you're not going to stop that until you get to drainage stop up there in the north side.
We have $1 billion in projects that we can do to start working at this, or we can safely ignore them and say this is somebody else's problem.
I think maybe, maybe for the benefit of what we're able to do tonight is, it sounds to me, Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, we have at least enough to say we want to move forward. And I think what the decision is, do we move forward? And do we do it with a citizen vote? Or do we do it with the council action? And I think, you know, maybe that, given the hour, that truncates the conversation. We have a future agenda item.
It does. It does. I want to make sure that our body here, just like we had a retreat two weeks ago, and we talked about mutual respect, mutual listening of people. And just because somebody wants to go to the voters with such an item, doesn't mean they don't care about their neighbors. Does not mean that they don't care about drainage. Does not mean that they want to pass on this issue. I want to be real careful, as we discuss through this, that we don't assign motive to someone simply because they want to go to the voters. It's a, there's nothing in here about, let's just move out, let's just put it on the next agenda, we'll pass it and we'll move on. We don't even know how much, we don't know how it's going to work. We don't know, you know, all this kind of stuff. So I think there's enough to have a conversation about it and move it forward. I'm intrigued to have a conversation as myself. I don't even have a vote on it unless one of you guys are absent that night, and it's a tie. And I'll tell you, if that happens, I'm going to vote to take it to the voter. Because this is a new tax. Call it what it is, you can call it a fee, you can call it whatever it is, but it is a tax. And I'm going to be looking real carefully at how that gets administered, how it could potentially grow over time. How does it get controlled so it doesn't grow out of control? All the things that we've talked about, okay? Just like anyone else, I want more dollars into drainage and more dollars into fixing problems that we have. I have a son, daughter-in-law, and at the time, two grandsons. One was less than six months old, three and a half feet. Know full well what it means to have a flood at home and what that means in family members to do that. So I get it. But we're also entrusted with the public trust. And so I just want to make sure that we have thoughtful, careful discussions around it, and we don't impugn motive just because someone wants to take that out to the voter. But I do agree, I think we have enough. Now, Councilman Owens, we've got enough discussion tonight. I think we've got enough that we can present this and talk more into the future on how we do that. If it is going to go to the voters, I will say this, we have the ability to have it in November. So I mean, that's, that's coming up. But we don't need to, we don't need to waste time passing a date to move that to the voters. So if that's how we choose to move forward. So unless there's substantive comment, yea or nay, we've got plenty of folks. Member Carbone didn't speak, so I'll let him move forward.
Yeah, I mean, I can count to four. I mean, it's additional tax. I like looking at the numbers, and the restaurants that are coming out of COVID are going to hit, get hit, proposed with 50, 60 bucks a month. Everybody will get an additional $5 tax on their water bill with everything else going on. So if that's how the body wants to go, I lean more towards Councilman Owens and its priorities with the general fund. And it's a great stump speech and fear, and it's going to flood. And I get that, and we do have issues. But I don't know that just raising additional taxes is going to solve it.
So, member...
I just wanted to say that I'm fully behind this going to the voters. I just think that it should move forward, and I appreciate your comments, Mayor.
Any other comments, questions? Nope. All right, with that, we'll move into adjournment.
Mayor? Mayor, we did have one other item that I discussed with you.
Oh, you're right. It's not an item on your agenda. We had a citizen to speak, we're past that. But every one of you received this at your table, Pearl Theater. Naomi, I'm going to do this so we don't move out of...
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Of what we're doing for the agenda. But you've all received this at your table. There's an opportunity to go and see some good local talent this weekend coming up. So take a look at that, pass that along to others, and participate in our arts leagues and arts organizations, okay? Thank you. With that, we're adjourned at 9:24.